Are we good? Hi, welcome to the combined school committee meeting of Wednesday, September 18th, 2019. I will go ahead and open up to call the meeting to order. I will call the meeting to order for the Union and Northborough.
I'll call the Union for my opinion. Second, Northborough and Union. I'll call the meeting to order for Southborough.
Second for Southborough?
Great.
There is no second.
Yeah, we don't have to vote on this.
That's right. All right.
Oh, okay.
No, no vote.
It's my first combined meeting, I apologize. We're good with this. We're all at the order. So, the first item on the agenda this evening is audience sharing. Do you have any members of the audience that would like to share this evening? Okay. Being done, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is action on the minutes. There are two minutes in your packets.
May I move for Northborough and the region to accept the combined open meeting minutes of June 19th, 2019, and the combined special open meeting minutes of August 26th, 2019, as stated.
Second for the region.
Second for Northborough.
I'll move the same for Southborough.
Second for Southborough.
You get them all? Union? Motion for Union.
Oh, you do. Second for Union?
I guess I just opposed her. Sorry. Second. All right. You're doing Southborough. Sorry, I'm just getting this. I just called it.
Roger moved, I second.
Okay. And then, Northborough. I made the motion.
Okay.
I make a motion for Northborough and...
Any discussion on the... And this was for... We're doing both sets of minutes together.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? All of us in favor? Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is study group updates.
So, the first update I'd like to provide the committees about the start time task force. We have a very small committee of 37 members, which is... They're all very eager participants. So, the task force can divide it into four subgroups: research and data, scenario and options, community outreach and logistics. So, we're dividing and conquering. Each subgroup met over the summer and completed its task, and the subgroup convened again on September 4th to kind of to share what happened over the summer and continue with work. The next set is related to begin, community outreach and education. And just to mention, Catherine Klatko is the school committee liaison. She's been attending all of the subcommittee meetings, and will provide the committee with an update at the next combined meeting and with more detail and information about the work ahead. I'd also like to share that the district has to be the school start time assessment report. You know, that was completed by School Bus Consultants. We received that report at the end of June. It's quite lengthy and dense. The task force has received the report and is looking at logistics. It is very transportation-centric. It does not take into account people's attitudes, beliefs, doesn't take into account athletics and some other pieces, and that's what the school start time task force will be looking at. School Bus Consultants will be giving a presentation at the next combined meeting on its analysis and its recommendations moving forward. So, that's the school start time task force. This year, we're also launching a pre-K through 12 music study group, which will be led by Rhonda Webb. And the real... The purpose of this study group is to evaluate and celebrate our pre-K through 12 music program, highlight the strengths, identify opportunities for growth, and make recommendations for the next three to five years, including budgetary recommendation. And it's a real opportunity for us to celebrate the great music program we have pre-K through 12 across our three districts, but also look for opportunities to actually strengthen and build upon the program. And those are the two study group updates.
Lynn?
I just wanted to add a comment. I'm really glad to see I'm looking at the music study groups and we've had different district groups on other areas of academics, but having done what we've done in the arts to sort of sort of see how it can maybe make the four year program so that I like to evolve academic programs and have the students come to Algonquin and they have similar experience. So, I'm really glad to see passing back and also taking in some of the new stuff and you know, just different perceptions of what we should have at the end of last year. So, I'm glad to see that we're working on it.
Lynn?
I'd like to echo the same comments that Lynn had because at the... I think it was the June combined meeting, we had a parent and a student who came and had some concerns about what the structure of the music program is going to be with the retirement of a person, a personnel. And I think that it's always hard when we do audience sharing because we do not have any feedback going back and forth or, you know, no verbal communication or dialogue. So, what I'm pleased to see is that the administration and the chairs have been proactive and along with the assistant superintendent and superintendent to listen to the... We listened to the concerns. It didn't just drop on deaf ears. We went forward and we tried to see how we could make it even better. So, it's just a thing of showing where, yes, we are listening to you. We cannot respond when we have audience sharing, but yet we're working behind the scenes on that, and this is a result of it. So, thank you very much.
Moving forward, the next item on our agenda is going to be policy development and distribution. Will you give a second reading of policy?
So, I'll give you a little context about the visitation and observation policy. But this policy was brought to the combined policy subcommittee in 2014. It's been reviewed and updated. In Southborough, there was an existing policy called current visitations, K-200, and it was last revised in 1999. In Southborough, in Northborough, the existing policy was current visitations, K-150, and that was revised in 2006, and the region did not have a current visitation policy. It was brought forth to the combined committee under the recommendation of Karen that we looked at this policy. And in 2014, the policy subcommittee met and created a draft policy, which was brought to the combined committee on March 25th for a second read. And at that time, the combined committee asked that it be brought back to subcommittee for a second look. During that time, there was a civil rights complaint filed against the district, basically stating that we did not have uniform practice in terms of how we were allowing visitations and observations to take place. So, part of the work that we were trying to accomplish through the creation of the policy was making sure we had consistent policy across our three districts with consistent and uniform procedures and protocols, so that if you went to disease school or Algonquin or Ludworth School, all the same procedures and protocols would take into account. The policy actually sat dormant in subcommittee for a number of years, and this summer, we received a communication from the Office of Civil Rights with a proposal to come to resolution of the complaint. Basically, the resolution does not mean we were out of compliance. It just means that we've agreed to move forward in a way that actually resolves the concern. And to move forward, basically, they recommended a policy of visitation and observation and also standard procedures and practice. And we worked with our legal counsel to review the policy and the procedures, and they said it aligned very closely with the policy that was in the policy subcommittee. So, actually, the combined policy subcommittee met last night to review the policy. And in your packet, you have the visitation and observation policy, K-250, which is the policy that legal counsel has recommended and actually meets all of the public law of civil rights. And in addition, you also have visitation and observation procedures in terms of uniform practice across our three schools. So, this policy really is a second read.
John?
Is for Northborough, can I do the rescinding along with the accepting of a new one in the same vote? Okay. So, for Northborough, I first like to recommend that we vote to rescind parent visitations, K-150, parentheses, 1340, and a parentheses. And at the same time for Northborough, that we vote to accept the visitation and observation policy, K-250.
Second for Northborough?
I move for the Union. Do I have to review the whole thing?
Do we need to for the Union? Because it's... We don't need it for Union because it's just for the Northborough, Southborough, and the region for the policies because there's not a policy manual for the Union.
I'll move for Southborough, with the exception of recommending rescind K-200.
I'm sorry, you were not going to recommend?
It's a different policy number for Southborough than it is for Northborough. So, we're saying, let's move on to the motion.
Oh, second. And your motion was just to rescind 200, right?
No, I would... Let me start over. I'll move that we approve policy K-250 and rescind policy K-200.
Second.
Is there a policy for the Union?
K-250 is the policy for the Union. You should have a copy of that.
It was...
There was no policy to rescind the region.
Oh, okay. Oh, it was... It was 240 and they renamed it to 250, it looks like.
So, there was no parent visitation policy. It was only a Northborough task force. So, there's no policy to rescind at the regional level.
So, I move that we adopt visitation and observation policy, K-250, for the region.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would like to move that we vote second for the motion to rescind the district.
Sure. Gotcha. All right, so...
I have one question.
Keith?
The URLs on this one that we got printed?
Yeah.
They go to somewhere on the district website?
Correct. They... When... They all go to the... The one link that goes to the visitation and observation procedures, and then the district nondiscrimination notice goes to the respective district's nondiscrimination statement.
Thank you.
So, for Northborough, all those in favor? All right. That's everybody, so opposed. Southborough, all those in favor? Everybody, one, two, three, four. Is that all Southborough? Okay. And opposed, stand. And all of us in favor for the region? All right. Opposed? Looks like the motion passed. All right.
The Union, not the region.
So, the next item on the agenda is the draft calendar, student calendar for 2021 per year.
So, in your packet, our two draft calendars, just for your review and for further discussion at an upcoming meeting. Next year, there's a little bit of the unique challenge with the week Labor Day happening on September 7th, which is very late. So, the first calendar proposes that we start school on August 31st for teachers, the 26th and then 27th. Actually, August 31st and September 1st, and returning, and students would return on the 2nd. And the last day would be on June 18th. In terms of holidays, illegal holidays and vacation schedules, there are no changes to the calendar that you have in front of you. The second calendar is basically identical to the first with the exception that teachers would return on the 27th and 28th, and students would return on the Monday, the 31st, and Friday before Labor Day would be a no-school day. The second calendar would require approval from the regional association, as it is in their contract, that they cannot start any earlier than the Monday before Elaine the day.
I'm just looking at the calendar, like, one, two, three, four, you know. And so, it looks like the difference between the two calendars on the last school day is one day.
Correct.
So, then, we would be only gaining one day for the students psychologically starting kind of a week earlier.
Yeah.
So, it's just food for thought. I mean, I don't have to school anymore, so, you know. But, you know, I just whether that's worth one day.
I have a question. What's the reason for the, you know, school on the 4th on the second calendar?
The number of absences we have on that Labor Day weekend. A lot of families tend to take that Friday off and continue kind of the last vacation of the summer. But that, again, that's an option that it does not have to be a requirement, and that's why we only gain...
One day. I was wondering where the one day went out.
It could be a... It could be a school day.
I think a lot of other school districts take that Friday off, right? So, we would be kind of joining school districts in the area...
Correct.
...of taking that off. Okay.
But a lot of those school districts also start the same day we do. Like, they start that Wednesday. Like, my mom starts Wednesday, and they're over, and then they have Friday off. So, it's like a...
Yeah, Shrewsbury started... We started Wednesday, Shrewsbury started Tuesday.
Yeah.
And then they got the Friday off.
Yeah. Is it a big absent even starting on Wednesday, on Friday?
So, I think it's been a few years since we've actually started during that week. So, I think it hasn't... I think it's the same. It's, you know, in terms of attendance and absences. Families are just taking that... Seem to be taking that time.
That's them, okay.
Yeah.
So, Greg, you're saying if we... Looking at draft number two, that would mean that the Association of the Regional High School would have to take a vote on that one, since it's in their contract. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, let me ask you the question. Would that then open up... Because sometimes, would that then open the whole entire contract? If you're changing one part of the contract, does that then say now we're opening up the contract and we could end up in contract negotiations before we have to?
So, I am meeting with the Association presidents tomorrow to review these calendars. These are just proposed calendars, so I will be having a conversation whether they would even want to entertain considering this calendar. I think, given the fact that it is a negotiation year, that it doesn't make sense to open up the contract for a single option. But this proposal, if the Association was interested in looking at it, then we'd move forward with it. If not, I don't think we should consider it as an option or calendar. The purpose of bringing these two calendars is just to facilitate a conversation, to start the conversation around school calendars. Obviously, it's the will of the school committee to actually vote and adopt the calendar, and we do have some time to get feedback and input from the Association's parents and the community as well.
So, on the... Just speaking of the Friday, I know, like, as other areas do have it off, do they have that as a professional development day or just that's where it's off of both students and teachers typically?
So, I haven't surveyed all the districts that do take that Friday off and whether parent, you know, faculty has professional development or not. I can find that information out. From the few anecdotal conversations I've had with surrounding districts, it's a day off, it's no school. But I can find that.
I'm just curious because if that's something that other districts had as a professional development, then although there's probably something to be gained by having two consecutive days, but, you know, it could be something that we look at. But it's just, as you say, just getting ideas out there.
Any further discussion? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a personnel update.
So, in your packet, you have information about the activities taken place in terms of personnel updates and hiring. And at this time, I'd like to just have you take out the organizational chart that we reviewed as a committee back in the spring. Over the summer, we've had a lot of moving and shifting parts, largely due to the fact that people were taking on new roles and positions within the district. For example, my new role as superintendent facilitated filling the role of assistant superintendent. So, with interim assistant superintendent, Rhonda Webb, that created a position for the director of English language education. Rebecca Pellegrino took on the new role of director of finance and operations, which resulted in, you know, advertising for the position of human resources. And we were fortunate enough to hire a new HR director, Heather Richards. We also, through the organizational chart, added some reshifting, restructuring roles and responsibilities in terms of positions. And on the chart, you'll see that the director of human resources department was created in 2014, when superintendent Johnson began her role. And then, the organizational chart added a human resources administrator, which we had filled that position. Nina Wall has taken on that role. She was the personnel coordinator, so we just left her position vacant. And Elaine Chisholm, who was the receptionist, actually took on that position. So, we had to fill the receptionist position. So, we had a lot of moving parts at central office in terms of shifting and moving. All of the positions that were identified in the organizational chart have been filled, with the exception of the facilities and operations transportation administrator. We've had Jim Doliker serve that role as a consultant while we stabilize and shift and get folks into their positions. And at this point in time, I have a good sense of what I think we need in terms of organization, in terms of managing the operations. And at the time we proposed this organizational chart, if you look at the director of finance and operations area, it included adding a facilities and operations transportation administrator and a finance and operations administrator. We have added the finance and operations administrator, but there still is a need in terms of really having some leadership in terms of focusing on the operations. The way I look at it is currently, in most private industry, you would have a chief financial officer, a chief operating officer. For many years as a district, we've had the chief financial and operating officer, which has been a very large role. We've had a number of studies done, the first one done in 1999, that talked about how efficient the operation and lean the operation was and a few people who we had doing the work. Some minor changes took place from that evaluation in 1999. And again, in 2004, another audit was done in terms of our staffing models and what we worked best, and the same recommendation was made around, we're very lean in terms of our operations and finances, and just in general, in terms of central office for the type of organization we have. And then, lastly, in 2009, another evaluation was done, and again, very similar findings and recommendations. And basically, the recommendations centered around really thinking about the finances and operations and the complexity of the district. You know, we have three budgets, we have three school committees, we have, you know, very complex facilities, we have multiple food service departments, and really making sure that there's the leadership in that area to actually accomplish those goals. When we created this chart, the thinking was not to separate director of finance and operations, but to have two administrative support that work. But after more thought and thinking, I am making a recommendation that instead of adding a finance and facilities and operations transportation administrator, that we add a director of operations and separate the director of finance and operations, separate the operations from that position, and have it just one focus on that work. It does require a high level of attention to detail and expertise. It requires a deep understanding of what's happening in our schools. And when we talk about some of the projects that we have with MSBA, the pin boiler in the school, the SOLOA projects, a lot of initiatives we have around operations, I think it's beyond just the administrator-level position. It takes someone to really focus solely on operations, provide that leadership and support to our districts. So, the proposal is shifting the administrator position to director of operations, and the team would become director of operations, director of finance, and the position that would support those two would be the finance and operations administrator, so that'd be the connecting link. We've also had a recent retirement at central office, Pauline Jankis, who'll be retiring on October 5th, which also provides another opportunity to make this type of shift at this time of the year. I also would like to point out that this implementation of this plan is a 1.0 increase from FTEs in terms of leadership, from where we started when we discussed the implementation of this program. So, it's a 1.0 increase. It's just a lot of shifting of roles and responsibilities. Pauline has been sitting in as the transportation and registration support person, so we'll be posting that position and looking at that for that position as well.
So, you mentioned, so the finance and operations administrator is actually has a dual matrix?
Yeah, so actually, the chart actually should have another line to see a position, the director of operations.
I mean, I think the operations of this organization decides that it should have two separate directors. You know, so I'm not, you know, so I'm supportive of this recommendation. Now, you did say that the... So, we already passed our budget, and you mentioned that...
The purpose of bringing these two calendars is just to facilitate conversation, to start the conversation around school calendars. Obviously, it's the will of the school committee to actually vote and adopt the calendar. And we do have some time to get feedback and input from the associations, parents in the community as well.
So, on the, speaking of the Friday, I know like as my, other areas do have it off, do they have that as a professional development day or just actually off of both students and teachers typically?
So, I haven't surveyed all the districts that do take that Friday off and whether parent, you know, faculty has professional development or not, I can find that information out. From the few anecdotal conversations I've had with surrounding districts, it's the day off, it's no school.
Okay.
But I can find that.
I'm just curious because if, if that's something that other districts had as a, as a professional development, then although there's probably something to be gained by having two consecutive days, but, you know, could, could be something that we look at. But it's just, as you say, just getting ideas out there.
Any further discussion? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a personnel update.
So, in your packet, you have good information about the activities taken place in terms of personnel updates and hiring. And at this time, I'd like to just have you take out the organizational chart that we reviewed as a committee back in the spring. Over the summer, we've had a lot of moving and shifting parts, largely due to the fact that people were taking on new roles and positions within the district. For example, my new role as superintendent facilitated filling the role of assistant superintendent. So, with interim assistant superintendent, Rhonda Webb, that created a position for the director of English language education. Rebecca Pellegrino took on the new role of director of finance and operations, which resulted in, you know, advertising for the position of human resources. We were fortunate enough to hire a new HR director, Heather Richards. We also, through the organizational chart, added some reshifting, restructuring roles and responsibilities in terms of positions. And on the chart, you'll see that the director of human resources department was created in 2014, when superintendent Johnson began her role. And then the organizational chart added a human resources administrator, which we had filled that position. Nina Wall has taken on that role. She was the personnel coordinator, so we just left her, left her position vacant. And Elaine Chisholm, who was the receptionist, actually took on that position. So, we had to fill the receptionist position. So, we had a lot of moving parts at central office in terms of shifting and moving. All of the positions that were identified in the organizational chart have been filled, with the exception of the facilities and operations transportation administrator. We've had Jim Doliker serve that role as a consultant while we stabilize and shift and get folks into their positions. And at this point in time, I have a good sense of what I think we need in terms of organization, in terms of managing the operations. And at the time we proposed this organizational chart, if you look at the director of finance and operations area, it included adding a facilities and operations transportation administrator and a finance and operations administrator. We have added the finance and operations administrator, but there still is a need in terms of really having some leadership in terms of focusing on the operations. The way I look at it is currently, in most private industry, you would have a chief financial officer, a chief operating officer. For many years as a district, we've had the chief financial and operating officer, which has been a very large role. We've had a number of studies done, the first one done in 1999, that talked about how efficient operation and lean operation was, and a few people who we had doing the work. Some minor changes took place from that evaluation in 1999. And again, in 2004, another, you know, audit was done in terms of our staffing models and what we worked best, and the same recommendation was made around, we're very lean in terms of our operations and finances, and just in general, in terms of central office, for the type of organization we have. And then lastly, in 2009, another evaluation was done, and again, very similar findings and recommendations. And basically, the recommendations centered around really thinking about the finances and operations and the complexity of the district. You know, we have three budgets, we have three school committees, we have, you know, very complex facilities, we have multiple food service departments, and really making sure that there's the leadership in that area to actually accomplish those goals. When we created this chart, the thinking was not to separate director of finance and operations, but to have two administrative support that work. But after more thought and thinking, I am making a recommendation that instead of adding a finance and facilities and operations transportation administrator, that we add a director of operations and separate the director of finance and operations, separate the operations from that position, and have it just one person focus on that work. It does require a high level of attention to detail and expertise. It requires a deep understanding of what's happening in our schools. And when we talk about some of the projects that we have with MSBA, the Penn Boiler School, the SOLO projects, a lot of initiatives we have around operations, I think it's beyond just the administrator level position. It takes someone to really focus solely on operations, provide that, that leadership and support to our districts. So, the proposal is shifting the administrator position to director of operations, and the team would become director of operations, director of finance, and the position that would support those two would be the finance and operations administrator, so that'd be the connecting link. We've also had a recent retirement at central office, Pauline Jankis, she'll be retiring on October 5th, which also presents, provides another opportunity to make this type of shift at this time of the year. I also would like to point out that this implementation of this plan is a 1.0 increase from, from FTEs in terms of leadership, from where we started when we discussed the implementation of this program. So, it's a 1.0 increase. It's just a lot of shifting of roles and responsibilities. Pauline has been sitting in as the transportation and registration support person, so we'll be posting that position and looking at that, supporting that position as well.
So, you mentioned, so the, so the finance and operations administrator is actually has a, a dual matrix?
Yeah, so actually, the, the chart actually should have a, another line to see a, a position, the director of operations.
I mean, I, I think the operations of this organization decides that it should have two separate directors. You know, so I'm not, you know, so I, what about this recommendation? Now, you did say that, the, so we already passed our budget, and you mentioned that your notes that we got, that it was covered the cost of the, because there's another 1.0, but it's $15.
Correct. And we also have money in our consultant line item right now, because the thinking was that we'd keep the consultant on for most of the year to actually serve in that capacity.
Hmm.
But quite frankly, we need someone there full-time doing the work with a high, high level of leadership.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, so with an operational budget, it's not an increase to the bottom line, it actually is within, within the staffing model and the budget that we submitted.
It's always like not, also to have like a consultant, long-term, having a leadership role, doesn't, doesn't, it's not really that great of like practice.
And it's very costly, and there is a cost to having consultants.
Right.
So, the word proposed is on both pieces of paper that you handed out. The one that you're really proposing to go forward with is the, is the plain one with no colors on it, the proposed chart. So, if I, if I understand it right, the director of finance and operations and a, an administrator are now being turned into two director level positions. The money's there, you feel comfortable that kind of making it a more senior position is the right thing to do. And then, did I hear you say to Lynn that there was a, a reporting line on the old chart that's missing?
Yes, so if you look at the, the finance and operations administrator, that is directly beneath the director of finance.
Yes.
It actually should have a connecting line to director of operations as well. So, that is, that is the support position for the, the two director positions.
So, that person will have two bosses?
So, the team will be the director of operations, director of finance, and the finance and operations administrator will make up the team.
So, with these proposed changes, how do you think this will alleviate some of our busing issues we've seen over the last two years?
So, then I think that we need someone to focus solely on transportation, food services, and facilities. Right now, it is a team effort at the central office, and it has been very taxing when anything happens in terms of something like transportation where we need every, you know, everyone's minds on solving the problem. So, it's, it's taken me away from my responsibilities, it's taken Rhonda away from her responsibilities, it's taken Becky away from her responsibilities. Having a key player who can actually have some oversight in terms of the process and protocols and procedures, and in terms of making sure transportation is, is seamless, and that we start the school year, you know, seamlessly, takes a high level of leadership and position and intention to detail, where I think this person, this position would be able to apply that, that level of leadership.
Thank you.
So, we have Becky is going to now be re-titled for just director of finance.
Yes.
There's an open position for director of operations, which is the things here.
Yep.
Is the position filled for finance and operations administrator?
It is.
That's filled.
Yeah.
And then, so it's two positions, and then, because Pauline is leaving, so she was doing the transportation and registration support.
Yep.
And so, that's, that's an open, so it's two hires.
Correct.
And then, the one that Pauline was doing is changing from point four to one.
Correct. So, I, so the implementation of the org chart had been completed, with the exception of the director of operations was in the full-time transportation registration support.
So, do you need a motion for, to get these positions approved, or the part-time moved to full-time, I mean, is?
So, I don't need a, I don't need a, a motion, or I just was informing the committee that's not my direction I was heading.
I wasn't, fortunately, I was a hero to, to just put this out there when this came up the first time. I see the curriculum coordinator positions over there, you know, I just want to make sure that contain, continues to be robust. The only question I would have is, how does that connect to the regional high school? Like, there's no lens to, you know, to make sure that that avenue is still, there's some coordination between, you know, the, and the curriculum lines.
Yeah, so I think, so the central office team, all the positions on this org chart are supporting the three districts, every position on here, with the exception of the Northborough Facilities Manager, Southborough Facilities Manager, and the Regional Facilities Manager, you have separate folks focusing on that.
Yep.
As well, Food Services are supporting the, all three districts. So, the director of operations would, would support the three districts as well.
So, I have a two-part question. Has this job been posted? And it hasn't been posted. So, when would you like, the second part question is, when would you like this position to be filled?
So, we'd like to post as soon as possible, and obviously, I'm going through the hiring process and hoping to have this position filled if all goes well by January, you know, beginning of January. That would be.
If not sooner, or is that like?
If not sooner.
Okay. I didn't know if it was like a reason for calendar-wise or anything like that.
But when you did the money comparisons, was that assuming the jobs filled January 1st, or was that assuming the jobs filled day after tomorrow?
Assuming the jobs filled day after tomorrow.
Perfect, terrific.
Thinking in terms of process.
Yeah, no, I got it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is going to be the district review report.
So, in your packet, you will find the executive summary of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education District Review Report. It's just for distribution this evening, and I will present a more thorough report to the committee at the next combined meeting. When I was thinking about my goals, I did take into account the feedback and the recommendations from the, from the report. And the report is different from the coordinated program review we had with the Office of Civil Rights and Special Education, and the fact that these are recommendations, there's no, there's no requirement to implement any of the recommendations, not that we wouldn't, but there's no requirement that we have to. It's just feedback, it's just a value-add report to our district. So, I'll be providing a more thorough, detailed analysis and update at the next combined meeting.
I'm sure this is shared with the staff members, because I was just reading some of the challenges and areas for growth, and also some of the strengths, so this is shared with the principals to each of the teachers.
Yes, so this, so this will, this actually will be, become a public document, actually after, I think, next week, once the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will post it online. But we will also share this with our faculty and staff, and as the leadership team, we'll be looking at the recommendations and the analysis to see how we can improve and help our successes.
Will we provide a link on our school website, district website? You'll have a link to this. Okay, thank you.
I mean, just a thought, it, it sounds like the next combined meeting is getting a little, you know, beyond normal scope. I mean, we're going to talk about the, the, you know, later start time, we're going to talk about the bus report, which is always, you know, a blast, and, and then this thing here is, you know, is its own kind of can of worms, I think. I don't know whether we should think about scheduling more time for it, or maybe having it on its own separate night or something. It's, I mean, this, I don't see us getting through that, and that, that's just those items, much less everything, anything else I might get at in the next three months. We ought to, I mean, that might be worth some discussion while we're all here.
I would, I was going to recommend that we schedule a separate combined meeting that's disconnected from our regional meeting, so we actually can spend the time necessary to review these, these reports and actually have some thorough discussion, because an hour is not enough.
Right, I would agree. And I would also want, knowing that he didn't put me up to.
Yeah, I agree with Paul, because, I mean, looking at the agenda, our next combined meeting is December the 18th. And, I mean, even as a regional member, I'm looking at the clock and saying, okay, regional meeting at seven, what time we going to get there? And I think these are all, as Paul said, these are all important things that we're doing that impacts our district, so if we could spend more time on it, or I would be in favor of having just a separate combined meeting if we could, or maybe we either do it before a Southborough meeting or a Northborough meeting, whatever is the will of the committee, but I think we do need to spend more time on these issues. Maybe a dudle poll of several options.
Cheryl Leffery, find some dates and send out some calendar invites.
Thank you.
And next item on our agenda is discussion of superintendent's goals.
So, in your packet, I provided you with a draft copy of my goals. So, I've identified six priority goals, and I've organized those into four domains, instructional leadership, management, operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And I've done a lot of thinking around, you know, what I hope to accomplish by the end of this school year. I think it's important to note that there is a lot to accomplish, as there is every year. This year, with contract negotiations, also our strategic plan, Vision 2020, is setting. There are some additional responsibilities in terms of looking forward, and also some additional responsibilities in terms of negotiating contracts. So, my first goal really is to engage the school communities in developing a five-year strategic plan focused on student preparation for college and career readiness of the engagement, and community contributions supported by an articulated improvement strategy. So, this speaks to the strategic planning and, and setting a vision of where we want to go as a district. I think this is essential work, and this is exciting work. I think this is probably one of the most important things that I feel like I can do in my first year as superintendent, is really getting community engagement, thinking about a portrait of our graduate when a student leaves Algonquin Regional High School, what knowledge, skills, and attributes do we want the student to have, and how do we make that happen, and what types of learning environments do we want to create within our system? So, that strategic planning is, is really my first goal. The second goal is working collaboratively with school-based and district leaders to establish a common vision and understanding of learning and teaching. As a district, we're spending a lot of time talking about what strong and effective and high-quality teaching looks like, and what powerful and impactful learning looks like. I'm really trying to create a common understanding and a common vis, common vision around when we walk into classrooms, what do we want to see, what do we want to hear, what types of tasks do we want students engaged in, and really thinking about making sure that there's a consistent and common understanding throughout our pre-K through 12 system. The third goal is really supporting effective instructional practice, and really engaging and regularly scheduled school visits to observe classrooms with principals and directors, so that we can support a better-aligned evaluation process to help ensure teachers have the tools and resources to provide students with the highest quality instruction. So, in order to know the work, we need to see the work, and I need to be visible, I need to be in classrooms having conversations. We, as a central office leadership team, need to be visible in schools, having conversations with principals, and really focusing our conversations on school improvement and instruction. And again, what are those research-based instructional practices that we want to see consistently happening throughout our system? The fourth goal is management and operations. Basically, it's working with the director of finance and operations, the administrative team, the school committees, and the town administrators to identify budget needs as early as possible, establish priorities, implement financial reporting processes that drive confidence in the school department's transparency, prepare thorough and timely budget documents, communicate with town leaders and the public regarding budget needs, and to reach educationally sound and physically responsible budget agreements. This has been a great work of past superintendents, and I hope to continue those processes moving forward and fine-tune them and improve them as we, as we look at the FY21 budget process. Goal five is really looking to the community for engage, you know, establishing strategic partnerships with community organizations and community members and businesses to support district effectiveness. So, looking at, we're partnering with boosters, looking at how we can engage the community and thinking strategically about where we want, where we want to go, making sure that there are very strong business partnerships in our community to help improve our system. I know other districts have established very strong partnerships, and they've created innovation funds through those types of partnerships, and really has led to some creative and innovative thinking in those districts. I hope to bring and start building those partnerships and community connections for Northborough and Southborough. And then lastly, it's really about the establishing and developing administrator leadership team that is high-functioning, that has a shared vision for excellence in teaching practice, and a shared vision around effective instructional leadership that helps build school climate and culture. And this really speaks to the fact that we have a relatively new team at the central office, and really creating a strong, highly effective team to support the work that's happening in our schools, and making sure that the work that we're doing helps students at the classroom level. So, those are my six goals, and I included action steps. I feel like they're important goals, they're ambitious, and I feel like I'm up to the challenge.
Question through the chair? So, I'm not sure how important this is, not that the goal, I'm not talking about the importance of the goal, but when I look at the, I guess I'm going to call it the domain that you call management and operations. So, I know this, the timing on when these things were written were different, because this has director of finance and operations, and I'm not going to, you're actually going to have something else, but there seem to be, when I look at that domain called management and operations, a good part of that is really talking about finance and budgets. So, as I say, I don't know how important the domain title is, I just offer it up as something maybe to think about. No objection at all to what you have as far as the substance of the goal.
So, I did just share with you, in terms of the four domains come from the superintendent's rubric.
So, that's where finance, that's where, that's where they've slotted finance in ops? Okay.
So, I mean, we just got this, right? Thanks for sharing it. Just from a process point of view, I mean, you know, you say on the cover sheet you like feedback and input, I mean, I don't know whether we want to go through the point now of kind of skimming it and raising questions, I mean, that seems kind of productive. It's going to be another item on the combined meeting in December, or do you want the feedback to come just individually to you on a point-by-point basis? What are you looking for here, Greg?
Through the chairs, I think, would be most helpful.
Through the chairs?
Do you have any ideas or suggestions?
Well, we, we have to vote on your goals. So, do we vote on, on our original committees, or you don't want to be waiting until December? Or maybe the special meeting or something, but when, when's that going to take? I would think you want to get going now, I know the tradition.
So, I think that, so these have been in draft form, we've had conversations, I've had conversations with the chairs around all the goals and receive feedback. You know, I think I'd rather not wait too long before these are approved and...
So, could I suggest maybe that we put a motion on the table to tentatively approve these, you know, with the understanding that there could be minor changes, both, you know... these, you know, with the understanding that there could be minor changes, both, you know, both substantive and/or cosmetic, but that we won't need to revote unless there's something pretty material? Is that kind of a direction you're looking for tonight?
So moved for the region.
Six.
Seven for Northborough.
I'll move for Southborough. Second for Southborough?
So moved for Northborough.
A second.
Second.
Did we write all that down?
No.
Sean has this point still.
So, six. Yeah, that's a lot. My only concern, I mean, they're all worthy, valuable endeavors. Teachers only held to two goals. Most of the teachers have two goals, and you have six. It's a lot to chew off. And obviously, evaluation process, we cover all of these areas anyways because they fall within a rubric. But I just, I think it's a lot. No, that's for you to decide. But I mean, I think focusing heavily on one or two maybe would be, you know, we don't expect it of teachers, and the system doesn't expect it. So just concerned about the form of the goal.
I'd like to commend you on the very detail, and I like having the action steps and the measures, and I like the format, which I think goes along with what is recommended for superintendents from the Department of Education. I had a question on, will you be, will it be the same practice as with previous superintendents? Do you plan on giving us updates, like in December, and then? You will? Okay. I just have one question. If you could just send out a document, because if you look on the first page, your first instructional leadership, your second goal under action steps, you have implement a two-year, year two of instructional rounds. Maybe I've missed it, but if you could just via email send us what is instructional rounds, especially since you're covering it from August through June, it's the whole month. So I know it's an important thing. So just to educate myself.
So when I was reading this, I had the same thought about the number of goals, because I know, I've seen superintendents on their first year, they come up with, you know, six goals, and then they, you know, you might not be able to, they turn out to be kind of multi-year goals, and it's like, you know, too ambitious. I know, so for instance, like, the budget one is, that's something that is part of what is done every year anyway. So it's like, you know, not necessarily something that's like a, you know, I mean, we evaluate you on the budget regardless of whether it's a goal or not, just be a goal. And then I think I am concerned about the number, you know, the number. And I think in the past, most people have learned after that first year that to have it like at most four, maybe three, three or four at the most, and that's even, you know, ambitious. Especially if you have the size of the goals. Like, I know the strategic plan, that's, you know, a big time-consuming thing. The other thing that you find, that I've seen, is that other, you know, study groups that start, that take up your time. So we have the, you know, the school start study group, we have all these things that come up during the year that don't fall into any one of your goals, but yet it's work that is spent, and a significant amount of work, and it's all good. I mean, it's stuff that makes the, but it's things that come up that you still, as a school committee member, I have to be cognizant of and make sure I remember to evaluate you on those things that came up during the year that weren't necessarily part of your goals, but yet, you know, you, they still would fall into one of the domains, because, you know, pretty much the domains cover everything. But I, you know, want to make sure I put those in. But you kind of have those things, and I am concerned about the number as well.
So I'll suggest I'm less concerned about the number. I mean, I think my goals for my own job is over 20 for the year, and, you know, that's to me is too much. I think we've got a pretty, we hired a pretty smart and ambitious and goal-oriented superintendent who, out of the gate, says I can do these six things. And you always want to have goals that you reach for, and so, you know, maybe six is a reach, but I'd love to see someone reaching and doing additional things like that. And also, he's got an outstanding assistant superintendent who's going to be working with him. And going through those goals, I see that everything that you two do as a team, every week, you're going to be touching on something in here. So it's going to be a matter of also continually documenting the successes and the challenges that you have along the way. So I actually like to see the ambition.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Greg or anyone here, but I'll just share that what made me feel better about this when I first saw this, and we had the meeting as the chairs, and I think it was Kathy who asked, you know, this seems pretty ambitious, and Greg's response was I encourage the people who work for me to be ambitious with their goals too. And it's better to be ambitious and have that eyesight. And so I felt very comfortable with this after sort of hearing that explanation and understanding that, you know, the idea is to be reasonable when looking at the results in the end, is the viewpoint that I took, not to pare it down so that it's less ambitious.
I also have to say that I've heard every first-year superintendent say the same thing. All of them. I was struggled to complete their goals.
And I didn't say that. I was like, I want you to succeed, not to bite too much off and have to backtrack.
I mean, I will also say that I think it's an important point that there's a team behind these goals. This is not the Greg show. Every one of these is going to take a team to accomplish. You know, it's not, it's, you know, take any one of these, and it's really, if there's a strong team behind these.
Yeah, so I'm actually, I jumped on Too Many Goals bandwagon also. And while I think it's true that nothing within those six goals are things that won't be touched and shouldn't be touched, and I don't know how the Too Many Goals, if that's true issue, is dealt with in other situations, but is, does it make any sense to, if you had to identify the three most significant goals? I mean, is there a stratification possibility here that, because there is the issue of the jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none kind of possibility when you have a lot on your plate, and understanding that it is a team effort? So I don't know if...
I mean, I could easily prioritize my goals for you. I mean, I could, you know, rather quickly.
That might be a step in the right direction.
I think with Greg coming back in December and hearing the climate of the fellow members that are saying that these are too many, and not knowing, it's always variable in a school education, what's going to happen? Is there going to be catastrophe? What else? I think that, you know, Greg could come back to us, and I don't think we would hold him accountable if Greg goes, okay, listen, guys, in December, I think that this is taking more time, and I want to step back from a goal and continue it into next year. So I think that by Greg giving us updates, I think in hearing, I don't think any of us would say, oh, no, you said six, and we're going to hold you to six. So I think that we have Greg's interest in the district at the same time, and I'm glad to hear that everybody is saying that it's six. But I have worked with this guy, and we had, he had always these kind of goals, he had six like this, and he expected our staff to do it, and we did step up to the plate. So he models what he wants.
I agree with Joan in that. And also, I don't know if you can get too hung up on the number six as opposed to how complex each one of them are, and some of them seem much simpler than others here. So I don't know if that was your thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, just, you know, I think, I think, Lynn, your point around the budget process, no matter what we do, we have to, that's work that needs to be done. So I think maybe not having that as a goal, but it's work, it's important work. The other one is around the family and community engagement. Maybe that's not a first-year goal. Maybe that's something that I, you know, I can start thinking about in terms of creating those business and partnerships.
That's an example, a simple one. I think, I know you've already said it, we had a meeting with the boosters this afternoon.
But I can tell you the ones that I feel most passionate about and important, it's goal one, two, three, and... Twenty-three and six are the ones that...
One, two, three, and six.
Did you already have the district review report? They seem fairly aligned, but you already had that in hand? Correct. Okay.
So, I mean, you know, again, rather than kind of go over all of it, if, you know, I think we can suggest as we provide updates to you, what we would say, maybe if you were looking for something to kick down the road a little bit, you know, I would say, okay, kick this down or kick that down. And we could, we could provide that, you know, as we said earlier, through the chairs, you know, give you something. And if, as a result of all that feedback, you know, there's a material change to how your goals should read, you know, we can revote on it in December. But, you know, I think now, based on what we have now, without any of us really reading this thing, we ought to just maybe move the question and move along until we have a chance to read it.
I'd like to just echo, I think, in the rest of the education process, there's a formative assessment that goes along, and this is my first time through this process. So it almost would mirror that, that we do an interim check-in to see if still on track or need to be adjusted in a formative sense in mid-year. And I think that makes sense.
I just like, I'm not bothered by the number six. Yeah, it's a lot, but it seems like it's more of like, basically itemizing and going into detail of all the stuff that you were hoping to achieve. And so numbers, to me, don't really mean much, but I'm optimistic, and I think if this is your goals, I support that you could probably achieve them. Just seeing what you've done so far in the first.
I'd like to make a motion. Okay, we had a motion before.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Are we careful? I wrote down the mission.
We have a motion on the table.
It's been seconded.
Removed, seconded by all committees.
Which would not be inconsistent, by the way, because I think I hear, and I'm not going to speak for the superintendent, I hear that Greg wants to come out of this meeting with something voted on that, you know, supports these goals. I think, I think Paul's motion, which kind of said, look, okay...
Tentatively approve these goals.
But we want, you know, we want the opportunity to perhaps make some changes, et cetera, et cetera. And maybe those are large, maybe those are not just tiny changes, there might be a few things that come into play that could reprioritize some things. So that this motion still needs to be voted on, yes or no?
Correct.
So I can recap the motions that we wrote down to make sure everybody said what they said to go back over. So we had Paul, motion for region, Dan second for region, correct? We had Joan, motion for Northborough, Keith second for Northborough, and I have Roger, motion for Southborough, and I missed who, second for Southborough.
I'll second.
It's Katura, okay. And I assume you also need motion for union as well, as a superintendent?
So moved for union.
What's the motion, though, to accept as-is?
To tentatively accept the goals as-is with the understanding that there will be, there will be some changes to them based on feedback from the various committees, and a further understanding that we will revote on the goals if those changes result in material changes to the goals as they're written.
That's good.
So do second. Thank you.
I think that's what I said before.
All right, and so we'll vote separately, just to make it clear. All those in favor for the union? Is that everybody? One, two, three? Okay. All opposed? No, okay. All those in favor for Northborough? All right, that's everybody. All those in favor for Southborough? All right. And all those in favor for the region? And there's no opposed or seen enough. Good luck. We visit it in December. Thank you so much. All right. And believe, that was the last item on our agenda. So if you have any other business which may legally come before the committee? All right, so now I will make any motions to adjourn.
Motion for Southborough and Union to adjourn.
I'll move for Northborough.
Second for Northborough and Union.
I move for the region, just to go into recess.
Oh, wait, or, region's not adjourned, or, okay.
Second for a short recess.
All those in favor? All right, motion adjourned, have a good evening. I was scribbling.
Brian Delphus and I, Brian really does.
You know, that is so helpful.
... to the 2019, 2020 school year. Teachers started on August 26th, and we gathered at the Algonquin JFK Auditorium, all three districts. It was a great opportunity to thank our custodial staff and welcome-back teachers and actually launch the school year. We also had a presentation in partnership with MTA on social media, and the heralds of social media, so that was very well received. And I'd like to thank Mike Gorman and his team for all the hard work that they, his team did to prepare the opening of the facility. It was a very busy place this summer, and he'll share a lot of the work that took place and a lot of the activities that he had to work around as he ready the building. I'd also like to thank Dr. Walsh and her team for all the hard work that the team did preparing for the start of the school year. It's always amazing how much work it takes to end a school year, stop an organization, then just start it up again, and there's a lot of attention to detail, a lot of hard work, and a lot of planning that goes into making sure it's a smooth start. And I think most importantly, I think the students had a great first day, and we're very excited to be back, and excited to participate in athletics and all of the great activities and opportunities the high school presents to our students. We have a number of new members, our central office team, that I'd like to introduce to the committee, and some are new to the team, and some are not new but have new roles. So we'll hear from each of the directors, and they'll provide an update on some of the summer activities that took place. And we'll start with Rhonda.
During this summer, in addition, like you're going to hear shortly, about our educators being involved in teaching our summer programs, our educators took advantage of the summer months to be involved in professional learning, in world languages, in history, to align to our new history and social sciences frameworks, physics and environmental science, English and visual arts, all doing very important work.
Not new to the district, but new to the role? Becky?
Good evening. So the summer did go by very quickly. In addition to a transition of staff, there was also a transition in our office, our physical office space. So this summer, Caroline Willard, who was the regional financial coordinator, moved into the new finance and operations administrator role, which left her position to be filled. And we welcomed Michelle Lemay to our team three weeks ago, so she is the new regional financial coordinator, working closely with Caroline in that transition. In addition to that, our space, we had a generous donation by a company called Synopsys, and we were able to move all staff into one room. So we are all together, we're all able to collaborate, and we have beautiful, new-to-us cubes at no cost to us as well. So we're very much looking forward to working together as a team and starting the process of building the budget. I also want to thank Mike Gorman and his team. In addition to all the work that he did this summer, he also was kind enough to host all of the custodians throughout the three districts this summer as a thank you for all of the hard work that they did in working around all of the ESY programs and the rec programs that were housed in our schools.
And Marie Allen, Director of Student Support Services?
Hello, everybody. We began our school year...
We began our school year in Student Support Services on July one, with our extended school year program, and we also welcomed a new Assistant Director of Student Support Services to the high school, Kate Clark, who's sitting in the back, wave, and we're excited to have her on board as she begins her new year with us. Our summer was again bustling with activity for our Algonquin students, who continued their work in academic and social learning through the extended school year programming. We had six programs and walk-in services for grades nine through twelve, and for students aged eighteen to twenty-two years, and a total of thirty-four students were in attendance at Algonquin. We also housed many of our programs for students in grades K through eight here in our building at the high school, and consolidating all the services in this building and one other building in our district really helped with a more effective use of staff and resources. We want to thank especially custodial staff, who was headed up by Mike Gorman, for making this building workable and a wonderful place for learning, and to Principal Walsh here at Algonquin for their attention to detail in readying the school for the summer's program. It was amazing, and the students really had a great program. We're very thankful for their support and flexibility during the summer months, because we know how hard it is to run a program and also get the school ready for the students in the fall. This summer, we sponsored a new volunteer program involving middle and high school students who earned community service participation, and they engaged in social activities with ESY students over the five weeks of programming. We had fifty-six volunteers, and some of those students volunteered for multiple weeks. A new activity was led by this volunteer group each week in the following areas: sports, art, music, dance, and games. Thank you to Principal Walsh again for partnering with us to offer student leadership opportunities and to provide an inclusive learning environment for all our participants. Special thanks goes out to our ESY coordinator, Helene Desjordan, who did a masterful job in scheduling and coordinating all our programs. She also checked in with our NSPAC officers for preliminary feedback from parents during summer programming, and NSPAC reported favorable parent comments during her check-in. We'll be issuing an ESY survey soon to receive data directly from parents on their ESY experience. All of our assistant special ed directors went around to all of our schools and visited principals, teachers, and students the first couple of days of school. Everyone's visually engaged in activities, it's been a really good start to the school year.
We have a new member of our team, Heather Richards, who's the human, Director of Human Resources, and she actually downsized, she comes from Newn Public Schools with our thirty-five-hundred employees, so she wanted a smaller, more comfortable district, she joined our small nine-hundred employee, so Heather has been instant value, she's been, hit the ground running, and has been a great addition, so welcome, Heather.
Thank you, thank you. Well, it's, it's been a busy hiring season, as most of you know, I started July fifteenth, and that is really the peak of hiring season, until we get to the week before school starts, and then things ramp up. So, it's been very busy. Nina Wall and Elaine Chisholm are new in their positions, and I was new in my role as well, so we're starting to come together, we were trying to figure out how things work, and I'm pleased to say that everybody's been onboarded successfully, and people have gone through the annual training, the required back-to-school training, as well as the conflict of interest training, and we've also been handling lane changes for educators, moving from bachelor's to master's and other lanes, so it's been a really, really busy time, busy start to the school year, and very happy to be joining you here. It's been a really good start, so. Welcome, welcome. Thank you very much.
So, Heather is also an attorney, so she brings an added value to her general role, so.
Thank you.
We have our District Wellness Coordinator, Mary Ellen Duggan, who's not new to many of you, she was the school nurse at Woodward for many, many years, and has expanded her responsibilities in her role, so welcome, Mary Ellen.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here. For the past fifteen years, I've been at Woodward as the school nurse, and for twenty years before that, I was at UMass in pediatric unit, and I'm excited to take on this new adventure as the District Wellness Coordinator. It's only been a few months, but I'm learning a whole lot, mostly about triple E, as most of you can imagine, but before the triple E adventure, during the summer months, I supported the nurses that were working in the extended school year program, where the students from all the schools were housed here at Algonquin and at Finn. I was able to work with our electronic health record provider to have the nurses have access to all of the medical records electronically for the students who were in the program, so that it was a seamless transition from their school to the summer program and back to their school this fall. The beginning of the school year is always busy for the nurses, with the new students and all the paperwork, medical forms, physicals, medication orders, care plans, emergency plans, triple E forms, the paperwork abounds, and you guys have to fill out half of it at your house and then, but. We're fortunate to have three per diem nurses in the district that help our bustling health offices. The health office at the high school has been very busy since the start of school. The past fifteen days, it's hard to believe it's only been fifteen days, they've administered two-hundred-and-fifty-six medications and evaluated an additional five-hundred-and-ten students for illness, injury, or social emotional needs. They've managed to get most of those students back to class, I think it's ninety percent return to class, right, record, and kept all of that paperwork in order. So, I'm looking forward to a year of supporting all of our awesome nurses and promoting health literacy and wellness in our communities.
Black and New role?
I'm sorry?
Say, best of Black and New role.
Oh, thank you so much.
We also have Jennifer Super, who is the Director of English Language Education with Rota, serving as the interim Assistant Superintendent that left a vacancy, and Jennifer has filled that position. She was an ELD teacher at the high school, so she's very familiar with our district and the role that she's taking on.
Thank you, good evening. I am really pleased to report that we had a vibrant ELD summer program this past August for our district's English learners. I want to give a special thank you to Ms. Amy Soles, Principal at Z School, for housing our program, and her custodial staff for working around us so kindly. We were in session from August fifth through the twenty-second for those three weeks. English learners from both Northborough and Southborough entering grades one through twelve attended ELD program at Z School, with a total number of nine students coming from the high school in attendance, and, out of the fifty-one students who attended the summer program. In addition to the students, there were, of course, teachers, a coordinator, and bilingual student volunteers from both Algonquin and Melican. The focus of this year's summer program was digital storytelling, which involves combining a form of digital media, such as images, voice narration, music, text, or motion to tell a story. To create these digital narrations, our English learners used something called Scratch, which is a programming language developed by the lifelong kindergarten group at MIT. And this digital storytelling provided the students with a unique opportunity to work simultaneously on literacy and computational thinking skills, because the students had to formulate a premise, employ algorithmic and logical thinking as they wrote code to alter their setting, make their characters interact, and sequence events in their plot. And finally, the students had to analyze their code and implement debugging solutions when necessary. While at the summer program, students had many unplugged opportunities as well, as they, when they shared their digital stories with others, and even toured the robotics facilities at WPI, where they got to learn from professors and engineering students. As a true highlight, several of our students even got a chance to drive WPI's competition robot themselves. Overall, this summer's experience developed problem-solving skills in our students that are hopefully transferable to other aspects of their lives. I am truly grateful for the hard work and collaboration of our staff, students, and families for making this year's program a success once again. I look forward to providing all of you with an update on our high school English learners later this year.
Can I ask you a question, please? So, all these kids that went to the summer program at a school in Northborough, how did they get there?
They...
Do we do transportation for that, or?
We do not. Families provide.
So, interesting, so a whole bunch of kids that maybe would have liked to have been participated in that program didn't because they couldn't get there, is that, do we have any clue as to, I mean, that sounds like a, sounds to me like a pretty interesting program, and a good way to, to kind of get those kids, you know, I think acclimated to the whole process of, of, you know, what you're trying to provide, I mean, do we, do we have any way to find out? I mean, how big a program would that be if we provided transportation? How much better would it be if we provided transportation? Just, I mean, I don't need an answer now, I'm not even thinking I want an answer now, but, I mean, if I could just kind of put that out there as a, as kind of a question, it's, you know, we got a year to replant it if we think there's another way to do it better. Thanks, anyway, for your update, I appreciate it.
No, I will definitely take note of that and see if I can get back to you on that, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we have Julie Doyle, who's the Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So, the district technology team continues to support Algonquin's digital integration program, formerly known as our BYOD initiative, through investments in our technology infrastructure and devices. Over the summer, more student devices were purchased and set up for use. The goal for this upcoming school year is to allow for more students to be able to borrow a Chromebook for the whole year. I'd like to thank Brian Calnan, Sue Whalen, Pat Cilio from our tech department, as well as librarian Kim Honey for helping to make this program a success. In a recent conversation with Brian Calnan, he stated that he regularly observes students utilizing their devices in instructional settings, and that the distribution of the Chromebooks to students who need them seems to be running smoothly. We are happy to report that at the end of the summer, or actually at the very beginning of the school year, we recently upgraded the auditorium with a ceiling-mounted laser projector. This new projection system offers a much improved viewing experience. From the curriculum side of things, we're entering year three of using Canvas as our learning management system, and teachers and students continue to leverage Canvas to collaborate, communicate, and access course materials in an organized and easy-to-use platform. For another curriculum update, a few teachers are involved in organizing special activities for the Second Annual Massachusetts STEM Week, which takes place from October twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. It's a statewide effort to boost the interest, awareness, and ability for all learners to envision themselves in STEM education and employment opportunities. And lastly, I want to tell you about a system that we are piloting and that I worked on over the summer as well, to help manage, evaluate, and streamline all of our online learning platforms. Last spring, we were chosen to be part of a cohort of districts who are working to help provide Massachusetts schools with a trusted and scalable process to identify and procure high-quality instructional products. We're using a tool called Learn Platform to help with this process. Schools pay a lot of money for online platforms, so it's important to measure usage and impact to figure out if it makes sense to continue to use and fund these digital resources. This platform will also help us to manage and inform teachers and parents about student data privacy policies for online programs that are being used in the classroom.
I had one question, sorry. You had mentioned, like, anecdotally, students observed using devices and things, and I don't expect you to have this type of data right now, but maybe at some other time. I wonder what the checkout percentage rate of Chromebooks is on a daily basis or a weekly basis, or something that's manageable?
Sure.
To see how much of those are being used.
Yep, I did find out that information, in case anyone had questions, and to date, so we're only on day fifteen, but the average number of daily checkouts has been eighty-four.
Out of how many devices do we have?
We have over five hundred devices.
Eighty-four out of five hundred, okay.
Can I follow up on that? So, are these, do you check out and pack at the end of the day?
They are, but what we're doing is we are sort of keeping an eye on the frequent flyers and offering to them the ability to take those home for the year, and I have to say, some kids are deciding not to do that, so when given the option, they, they sort of prefer to just be able to come get it, but then we are sort of reaching out to those who, giving, we're trying to give as many kids the option to take, take them home if they want for the year.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And we have Mike Gorman, Facilities Manager.
Can you see it again? I want to thank the school committee for allowing me a few minutes to update everybody on the facility here at Algonquin. One of the roles for facilities here in Algonquin is to provide a creative workspace or a clean work environment for the students and everything as far as learning. The learning environment has to be in a cost-effective manner, while we do our job impacts the learning of the students and overall morale of the school. It's critical to come to work in a clean environment and basically have things working without too much distraction. We're fortunate to have an outstanding facility team here, here at Algonquin, and I would like to thank the facility team for doing a great job this summer, we wouldn't be here without their efforts. Overall, it's hard to believe the school is over twelve years old now, but it still looks good, you know what I'm saying? Because of the commitment of the administration and overall facility team, the program's in place to maintain our great facility, our safe and successful, and it's critical to Algonquin's mission of learning. Over the summer, we talked about hosting for the first time, you know, the district's summer programs. We had over forty classrooms in operation here, two hundred people daily, so with that, we were able to be very successful in maintaining and flipping the building over and doing our repairs, but that turned out to be a great success story. Some of the other projects that we've done over the summer is the parking lot. Our parking lot is over fifteen years old, it's beginning to show wear and tear, and we invested over fifty thousand dollars this year in repairs, cracked ceiling, in the hopes to extend the parking lot life to the life cycle of twenty-five years, and that's, we stand a good chance of that, but it's important every year to invest into these things. Over the time, over that parking lot, we did over seven hundred parking spots, all the safety lines, fire lines, and things that we painted, everything over, we put a lot invested in time in the parking lot. Other projects, we did for HVAC, repairs and things like that throughout the building, over thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of repairs in HVC, motors, valves, compressors, things like that. We did a large amount of floor repairs, fire door repairs, and so many more to keep the facility in good working order. It's a big building, and basically takes a whole team in support to keep it moving forward as it ages. Over the summer, basically National Grid basically had incentive program, so what's great about the incentive program, it's no money out of our pocket if it's done right, it's an interest-free loan, and it's typically paid back by the savings that we create from the energy conservation program. Knowing what to apply for is key. You basically want to know what's worth it and what's not, but going through the hoops and going through the process, we applied for two projects. We've had, in our, in our gyms, you know, the likes of failing, there's a lot of repairs, Mike can tell you that, you know, they needed attention, and there's quite a bit of repair bills on that. We were able to apply for an incentive program in there for the new LED lights. We've held off on the LED lights because they have not been cost-effective from what we had in here, and it would take too long to pay back, so we waited for the right moment in time, in the right picture to be generated, so we ended up redoing A, B, C in the wrestling gym. We did a complete retro of the lights in there, the value of the project was over ninety-one thousand dollars. In that, we received forty percent of thirty-eight thousand dollars incentive from National Grid, so that helps soften the cost. The remaining fifty-three goes on an interest-free loan, and it should pay less than three years, so that's, that's great. The second project that we did were variable frequency drive devices, and what happens is the VFD units go on any large motor, more than one horsepower, and it helps reduce the... reduce the operating cost of it. This program basically was forty-two thousand dollars. And going through the proper channels and applying, we were able to get forty-two thousand dollars or a hundred percent incentive back to the school. So, between those two, you're over eighty thousand dollars in free money by applying in the right places. We continue to look for other opportunities in grants and different things like that, always looking for other ways to fund and get supported. Basically, we're applying for a grant, and we're in the process of applying for a grant for ten thousand dollars with Meyer, our insurance company, and we hope to update it by the end of the year. That'd be great if we can get that one. Pretty much, a sports are on the way. Mike can talk more to that, but we continue to support the ongoing needs of them. We helped Mike to keep the cutting edge or the competitive edge with the teams and everything like that. And overall, like said, Triple E, we're doing everything we can to mediate and keep that under control, if we can. Last Friday, just a little thing, we had the Class of Sixty-Nine here for all the alumni is here for a tour. So, Class of Sixty-Nine was here. It was awesome. We had over forty people here. They toured the whole building. They were, they couldn't recognize the building in some areas. In other areas, they found things they could recognize. So, that was very, very exciting for them, and it was good for us to bring back the alumni, to see how much commitment they had to come back to school. We continue to be good stewards of Algonquin Regional High School and continue for opportunities and other ways to reduce operating costs. But overall, again, I have to thank my team for doing such a great job and keeping up with everything. So, thank you.
Just a comment. I mean, Mike's right on. His place looks great for its age, and you know, it doesn't just happen. I mean, and I love to hear the the ways that you continue to look for opportunities to save money and and make upgrades and and save money at the same time. You've done it before, and that's another great example right there. One one question I have, what what do you see as the biggest challenge for you and your team for this school year, if you could name one?
No, I think every year, every year has its challenges. Pretty much, it's finding a solution for those challenges and try to be cost-effective. You know, always money's tight, but that's the way the world is. Operating and trying to spend the money in the right places and not wasting a nickel, looking for opportunities for grants. I think, as we go forward, you know, as the building ages, I think that'll start presenting some challenges. But if we stay on top of it, we should be fine. Thank you. We should be fine.
We have one more update.
Au revoir.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
And we have Marie introduced Kate Clark. She, or she might have introduced and left, so she's a very smart person. So, Kate Clark is the Assistant Director of Student Support Services and has joined Erica and Deb and Marie's team over the summer. And that is summer after-school updates.
That's great.
So, we also have athletic updates from Mike.
Athletic update. Yes, welcome on, welcome back. I do have to ask, does forty-two degrees consist of a hard frost? That's what's happening tonight, I hope, so if that consists of it. But welcome back. Thank you for having me. We're about four weeks or so into the season. And as you know, we can get into the Triple E situation, but I think we've all done a great job with that, with managing that situation, because we know it is a serious matter, and we do take the safety of our athletes is the most important thing. But we had close to five hundred soon athletes again in the fall participating. We have still some rosters to build in regards to Unified Basketball, but right to where we were last year. We had just, before we get into the fall, the summer, we had a lot of summer events that took place this summer. We had basketball, boys and girls basketball, volleyball, field hockey, cheerleading, and track, all holding camps for our youth and the community members. We had a summer running series put on by our cross-country coach, Coach Pat Calvin. Again, reaching out to the community of all ages to come and participate in our cross-country course throughout the summer on Wednesday nights. Good turnout there. Going into the fall, you know, I touched on it a little bit, we do have, the the Triple E did hit our district, so I have to commend and give a lot of credit to the community members, the coaches, the administration, our district, everybody they've been great to work with with the changes that are into the schedule. As we put out an announcement before, it really has hit our boys and girls soccer programs and our football program. But we're making do because we are not the only community that is working with this. So, we're all working together on this, and they've been really great and really supportive with all the changes that are happening, especially last minute. So, I have to say, you know, it's it's been great. Going into this year, we only had basically three openings for coaches, so everyone was retained and came back. So, that was great. And of the three positions, we had Connor Henry, a new, a freshman boy soccer player, former graduate, came back. He also helped out with baseball in the spring. Mike Rocha, who's also working in the district, took over as head golf coach, and Brian Callan, who's also working in the district, is the assistant golf coach. Our athletic department has another Coach of the Year, which is great. We had three coaches named as of last year. The Massachusetts Basketball Coaches Association is naming Brian Doherty our head basketball coach for Coach of the Year for his leadership, dedication, and commitment to our student athletes. So, that was for the two thousand and eighteen and nineteen basketball season. Stuff we're doing as we're moving forward into this year, and we're establishing some of the similar programs, we have our T-Hawk of the Month award. That is yet to be determined, but it's going to recognize a male and female athlete, who, or male and female athletes recommend the months, their coaches and their teammates for their outstanding leadership, both in their teamwork and their sportsmanship and their excellence on and off the field. We have our Athletic Council up and running. We had our first meeting, very successful. I'd like to, so, new this year that we had never implemented was that we are having the fall team captains also participate with our Athletic Council. And it's more of a, not only anyone who is interested in Athletic Council, that does school spirit and game management and community service and Hall of Fame, all the community work that we have here, but it's also now going to be geared towards leadership training, all for our fall's captains to, starting in the fall. We will then allow them to continue to participate throughout the year. When winter comes, the winter team captains will now participate, and then vice versa with the spring. So, our first Athletic Council meeting, we had close to fifty, fifty participants that were interested in Athletic Council, along with the fall team captains. We're also, if anyone uses, we're utilizing the nice TV outside our office right now, hasn't been utilized in a while, to put our schedules up there, daily updates. We are having the Iron T-Hawk Award this year, which is recognizing all of our three-sport athletes. And for anyone who comes to the fall and spring and winter team meeting, we talk about the three-sport athlete. Those numbers are going down, and I think we're trying to encourage our athletes to play as many sports as they can for many different reasons. Most importantly, life, life lessons. And trying to make them aware between the three-sport athlete and the sport-specific athlete. So, we are, we are, we are going to recognize those athletes, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and put them up on the board and give them a little recognition. Our Athletic Council, which always sponsors Coach Omaha, Triple E has kind of put a dent into that. What that is, is a program. We try to get other athletic teams to go and support our other teams. So, we have volleyball. If you could get half the team to go support ball, football, you get a point. We tally up the point, and we have a meeting at the end of the year and celebrate that team for, also involves school events, too. So, they report back to me to make sure that, you know, it promotes school camaraderie. And it's, we have to put that on hold right now until, because everybody who's playing at four o'clock now, it's hard to get to all the games. So, October also kicks off our leadership training opportunities for our ambassadors. Our three ambassadors this year are Lucy Galvin, Nick Alcock, and Danielle Adams, senior and junior and sophomore. We are hoping to attend again two to three leadership conferences throughout the year. Our Captain's Breakfast, as usual, will take place on October sixteenth, and this is for all fall sports team captains. As you can see, the identifying theme, we're talking about leadership here, and we're talking about being role models, making good decisions, and that's with the workshop we're in town on October sixteenth. We kicked off that last year. Season results, so we're about four or five games in to the season. Our board soccer team are three, one, and one, wins over Leominster, Nittmuck, and Shrewsbury. Tiger versus Groton Dunstable. Girls soccer's two oh and two, with wins over Shrewsbury and Sutton. Field hockey is a very impressive overall record of five and oh, with wins over Wachusett, Nada, Quabbe, and Shepherd Hill and Fitchburg. Volleyball, five and oh. I believe they are now six and oh, because they won today, and they beat Doherty today, so they're off to a great start. Boys golf has an overall record of three, three, and one. And girls cross-country are one and one, with a tough loss versus Shepherd Hill, who's ranked one of the top teams in in our division, and a good win against Nashoba. Boys cross-country's off to a two and oh start. Our football team opened up the season last week. We're about a week behind with the schedule of how it starts. We had an extra week in there to prepare. They had a tough loss versus Doherty, twenty-eight to six, but we have our home opener this Saturday at three o'clock, originally on Friday at seven, moved it to Saturday at three. And our Unified Basketball program will kick off their five-game series, their season, beginning of, beginning of October. And they'll have two home games, three away games, or vice versa, three home games, two away games, and they conclude their season with a jamboree with many local teams that come in and participate. And last year, we were the host school. I'm hoping to hopefully be the host school again this year. I do have to say thank you to the Booster Club. We're continuously working hard together to support and dedicate our student athletes. Currently, Athletics and Boosters work together to put another two thousand dollars towards equipment upgrades in the weight room. Those new equipment includes weight sleds, training ropes, agility ladders, resistant bands, body weight, pegboard, twelve new medicine balls, already on top of what we added to last year in regards to the treadmills and to the bikes. I have to say that we had great turnout for one of the biggest booster events that we've had in all, all summer is our golf tournament. We had close to one hundred and fifteen people sign up. That's the most we've ever had in our five-year existence. So, outstanding turnout, and, you know, includes the coaches, administration, faculty, and staff, community members, and alumni. And that's one of the goals, is to reach out to our alumni, and we want more alumni to come back, because they want to be involved. I have to say special thanks to all those who make this possible, Central Office, Principal Walsh, and admin. The admin team at the high school, facilities, Mike touched on it, amazing work. We're getting the fields ready, gyms ready. I know when there is an issue, it's not easy. We go, we have great collaboration. We work together, and we try to come to a solution when there is, in fact, something that needs to be upgraded. And he's done an amazing job with preparation of our fields, the whole team has. We give them a lot of credit. Our athletic trainer, John Dursko, our coaching staff, Susan Bubirds, our administrative assistant, and our truly outstanding student athletes. So, that's the beginning of the fall season, and I, you know, before we know it, we'll be preparing for turning play onto winter, and hopefully, we can, we'll have a hard frost coming our way soon. So, that's our, that's the athletic update.
Can I ask a question, Mike?
Yeah.
At the beginning, you talked about that there are several summer sports camps that we run. Is that like a, I mean, is that, is that similar to what, say, the basketball team does in, on February break?
Yeah.
So, is it a money-making opportunity?
It is. Yes, it's a booster organization. They go through their teams to put on, so the track puts a track camp on. It's a fundraising slash camp event for all local activities who's done it. They've done it for many, many years. It's just grown as a fundraiser. Field hockey puts on a camping clinic in the, in the, in the summer. Same thing with volleyball.
Mm-hmm.
It's a way to not only bring in the community members or potential athletes that are coming to our school, but it is a way for them to fundraise.
And then that money just goes into the revolving fund? Thanks.
Yep.
So, Mike also has an update on?
Yes.
The Guide to Athletics.
The Guide to Athletics, yes. We met back on five fifteen, and I presented this, this is the second page. You might have received the summary page first, and then the draft, the Guide to Athletics. That summary page, that first page is really the one that was in addition to, as you could see, changes and additions to the five fifteen nineteen school committee meeting, it should be probably. It was a recommendation, two recommendations by the committee. As you can see under there, section three, team information. A section was added under coaches' responsibilities and expectations. Those were pages seven through nine. That was not included in our last meeting, but that was recommended amongst the committee. We went back, and we put in a section in regards to more detailed information of coaches' responsibilities and expectations. Right there is it more of a introduction, and you will see on page seven, it gets into our coaches' responsibilities and expectations. So, if you will take a look at that. Number four, safety. We've talked about the concussion and impact. We'd like to get that out and get that approved and get that noticed in our community more, because of the numbers that we had last year. This year's impact numbers are still to be determined, because we started it as of July one, so we're going to move forward with that. But I will say that, that is a new statement right there underneath, and the, this statement is also included in the Guide to Athletics as a hyperlink, where you can receive. They also receive it at our fall sports nights, winter sports nights, spring sports nights, coaches receive it, and we put it out in a one call to all the districts in regards to our impact program that we have to offer. Hopefully, getting out there and improving our numbers, that was touched on in our school committee.
So, as a follow-up to that, I mean, how many kids took that test so far this fall?
At the end of last year, there was, there was, there was five people, so those are the numbers that we presented.
Right. But now, we're in a new year. Are there kids that have taken the test yet? Are there?
New, we haven't run the numbers yet, because it's opened up as of July one. So, we can run those numbers, and I can, I can definitely follow up with a hard number in regards to, it goes July one to June thirtieth. So, we haven't run those numbers yet.
July one to June thirtieth.
Yep.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, we've, we've asked the coaches?
Yep.
To kind of push taking this test a little bit. The school year started, you know, fifteen days ago. The tryouts for teams began a few weeks earlier than that. Since that time, in that window, how many kids have taken the test? That would be a number I would love to know.
Yeah, we'll have to look at, yep, I'll look at that number. We'll come up with that number. I'll talk to my athletic trainer, and I can definitely update that. It will, it tend to vary throughout the season.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, but but five last year was a god-awful number, and it needs to be, in my mind, I think it needs to be bigger. I'd, I'd like to hear what it is.
So, it's a three, is it three years that lasts for?
Two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, maybe two years.
And coaches can't make their athletes take it before they start, correct?
It's not mandatory, yeah.
Not mandatory, right. But it can be pushed.
Well, right, I mean, yeah.
It seems to me that they're doing what they can. I mean, I was at the fall, the fall sports meeting. There was a presentation about the thing. Everybody got a flyer with a, you know, the URL where you go to take it, so.
Oh, good.
I mean, I think you're taking this, all the steps you can.
I know other districts have also, have had practice in the computer lab, and provided an opportunity for students to take, you know, participate in the tool and actually take the assessment. So, that's something I know, Mike, you and I talked about, so making it more convenient, rather sending a link and saying, here, if you have time, take it, making it?
That's a great idea.
A more convenient way that it happens.
Just a naive question, but why is it not mandatory if you're involved in sports, particularly contact sports?
It's been, it's been discussed. It's something that we can definitely take a look at. It was rolled out, I believe, in four years ago. I don't, I don't know if it was mandatory then, and some policy may have changed, but that is definitely a possibility. Some other schools around, locals around, make it mandatory, and they make it mandatory for either all athletes who participate, or they make it mandatory for high-impact sports. And so, they dedicate football to hockey, and they make those students, and we can definitely look at policy, and if that's something we can.
Considering the long reach of brain injuries, since that's one of my specialties, that would seem quite necessary, given, given the sports, yeah.
I mean, Steph, and I have to say, though, like, so when my kids started here five years ago, or, and even when it got rolled out, it was a blip in, like, the sports night. Like, you didn't even really know that you could do it, and if you wanted to, you had to go find it.
Yep.
So, at least now, like, it's actually talked about. The forms are there. You can take them with you. It's more out there versus before, it was kind of not, you know, like, unless you made your kid go to the athletic office, they weren't taking the test unless they did it at your pediatrician's.
Yeah. And it does bring the necessary gravitas to playing in sports that should be very strongly considered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's good things to consider. You always got to be mindful of, you know, parents' rights, you know, players' rights. I mean, how much do you make mandatory before you say you can't participate in a sport that you want to play? You know, so it is, I, I, I remember getting the forms, and, and I think it's, we've come a long way from when it was just, you know, if you want to do it, it's, it's, it's on the counter on your way out. And I think you've made great strides. I love what you've done here with it, you know, continuing to promote it. You know, there's a, there's a litany of things that can be done for, you know, student-athlete safety. You know, this is clearly one of them. But you got to be mindful of how much you make mandatory on a variety of different sports as, before you say to that student-athlete, you know, I'm sorry, you can't play.
Is there a cost associated with this?
Yep. Athletics Department, we pay eight hundred, I think it's seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, yep, a year.
For each test?
Nope, no, it's free.
There's no cost for the athletes?
Yes, it's no cost for the athletes, no cost.
So, we're already paying the money. There's no cost for the athletes. We already require athletes to get a physical.
Yep.
Which actually costs, well, now, now, no, but it doesn't cost. But in the past, it used to cost money. So, you know, it's, I liken it to, I liken it to a physical. Like, they have to take a physical to play sports for the year. So, why can't it be the same? And that's even more.
There's a lot of surveys you have to do online in order to play a sport.
Right.
But. I had to take, I had to take as a parent, the, the, the education on, on concussion. So, that wasn't, I mean, it was.
So, we definitely can take a look at, in our policies and practices, and, you know, I think trying to increase the numbers of students who are actually participating in this assessment is a great goal. And I think the more opportunities we, and the easier we make it for high schoolers, the greater likelihood that they'll take it. I think coaches play a huge role in terms of. I think coaches play a huge role in terms of, again, a lot of districts don't mandate it, but they have practice in the computer lab, you know, so it's an opportunity for students to participate.
Yeah, for the follow-up, I think that's a great idea and I know, I don't know if all the sports do this, but I know football, they, they have the kids check into the, I think it's cafeteria between the time the school ends and practice starts and they're supposed to be working on their homework and, you know, unless they have their club to go or something like that, but you could take some subset of the kids during that time, have them go do the test. So we can...
And, Mike, the test is just one component, right? I mean, then if something were to happen, you've got to, you know, you've got to go back and get it...
It's a basic component, it's another tool that we have to offer.
It's a tool, right, and so I know kids, I know kids some very well who've had concussions and they get cared for by their doctor and what, you know, and I think John is, is, does a, a decent job of really assessing whether or not that student athlete has, is now concussed.
Yes.
And then making sure that you do not come back for a period of time and then also until your doctor has cleared you.
Yes.
Um, so I think that, you know, anyway, from what I've seen, uh, from when I played football as one particular sport, it's a, it's a world of difference. So I think, you know, and thank you for continuing to make strides to make these sports safe.
But that's the whole point, I think, I see Mary Ellen down chopping at the bit back there, but, I mean, that's the whole point, it's just test establishes a baseline, how you're, how you're going to function.
A baseline, yeah.
So then, if something does happen, they have something that you do to test again, I guess, and see what the difference is, so, you know, it's, it helps with diagnosis, yeah.
Especially since many don't show up on scans, many concussions do not show up on scans.
And plus, I...
Get that right?
I mean, I mean, the other thing too, to think about, maybe the numbers may be different too is, and I don't know about everyone else's pediatricians, but I know mine would always offer them to come back and take the test at the office, it was free for them to take, so if you want to take it, you can just, you know, my kids could go back to the office, take it there and then she had the baseline at her office, so I don't know if parents are doing that as well. Cool.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
So next on the agenda is, um, a discussion around remote participation, um, at our August twenty-sixth, um, school committee workshop, um, and legal council presentation, the topic did come up around, um, remote participation, what are the requirements? So I think we learned that, um, for towns, it requires a town vote, um, to determine if remote participation at open meetings could take place. So we learned that Southborough does allow for remote participation, the town of Northborough does not. We also learned that the region is a some entity and can, um, take a vote or make a dis- decision on whether or not, um, it allows remote participation at its meetings. Um, so it's an open conversation around, um, if that's something the school committee would like to entertain.
So as stated, we use a, uh, word of selection in Southborough utilizes it, I've had to do it if I'm away, uh, traveling for business or something else is, is happening and I'm able to, to call in. Obviously, it's a little more difficult at times to, to completely follow along as you're on a phone and not everyone is perfectly on microphones, you're not capturing things that are on screen, so it is a, it is a challenge, but it's a, it's definitely a, a benefit when, you know, generally it's limited use and it's, you know, hey, I happen to be out of town, this particular meeting, and you state, you know, where you're going to be, why you're out, you know, what number you can be reached, boom, and then, you know, you're able to participate and I think it's been a benefit in those limited situations.
John, uh, when I saw that it was on the agenda, I decided to do some research on it. So I first contacted Andy Dowd because Northborough does not have that, I, I mean, they never, Northborough never took that vote at a town meeting as Southborough had. And, um, everything Greg said is correct, the regional school committee, we're an entity to ourselves, so we can take a vote if we want to do this. Um, so I contacted Andy Dowd and then, uh, yesterday I called Lynn Kuchar from MAS C just to see if there were any guidelines that they had, how does this go along? So, uh, he sent to me today and I gave a copy to Kathy and also to Greg, and it was a one-page, um, handout that just gave you the procedures about what takes place when you have it. So what I would just like to say is, is that if we take this vote tonight to do it, I think we have to look at our policy. Um, I looked at policies, I think it was under B two hundred, two twenty, which was, you know, the makeup of a meeting, because some of the things would change. So the policy could either look to update the policies or have another policy on remote participation, and this is just a quick list, because I'd just like to mention some things. One thing that we have to be aware of is that all remote participants must be able to be heard, and if there's any time during the meeting that we lose the communication, the meeting has to be recessed. If it gets recessed and we can't, um, establish communication with a person who's remote, then it has to be noted in the minutes, but the meeting can just still continue.
If I may, is that only if a quorum is no longer met?
Well, the quorum, the quorum is, the person, the, the person who's who, persons or persons who are remote are not part of the quorum, it has to be a live quorum. So they would be pre- present, but it doesn't constitute, remote participation does not constitute a quorum.
So I want to make sure I'm not missing something. So if someone's on a mobile phone going through the Berkshire's and they lose service, the meeting's over?
No, 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 no.
No, because you already have your quorum.
We already have, the quorum has to be live, no, it's just that we would have to try to reestablish and if it doesn't get reestablished, then it's just ma- the record keeper would just say, "That person who is remote is up." No, the meeting does not stop, we still continue.
I thought you said they only had the recess for me.
But that person never counts as the quorum, so that doesn't make any difference.
Yep.
Okay.
It would be the determination of the chair how to continue, if, if someone gets disconnected or not.
All right.
And it says here also, "The chair or the person authorized to chair the meeting in the absence of the chair must be physically present," so the chair cannot be a remote. Uh, and then these were just five quick things, okay? That, this is the procedure. Uh, the member notifies the chair or does a re, or does, does re to participate remotely and gives the reason. Number two, chair announces name of remote participants and enters name in the minutes. So in the minutes as being present will be remote participation. I would like, this is from attorney general, so I don't know if it was in Greg's, "All votes must be taken by roll call." So we could not just go yay, nay, we'd all have to do a roll call, uh, along with the, with the people or the, uh, that are remote. "If in an executive session, the participant must attest that no one else is listening unless authorized by a simple majority." So that they're at a secure location, nobody else is listening. And it said, "If you're in executive session, session, all documents used at the meeting, um, have to be given to that person so that they have them, and if it's used in the meeting, it's made as a record in the minutes of the executive session, the documents that were used." So I think the two biggest things are, that came to my mind is, okay, the quorum and then the other one was the roll call, okay? But, you know, we do have the legal authority to do it and I think Southborough, as you said, has done it, and I think in Northborough, if they'd want to do it, it would have to be through the town meeting. Northborough, KD, could not do it, it'd have to be a town meeting, correct?
Are you looking for a vote tonight or are we looking to maybe have this, uh, as a, here's, here's what the process would look like and then come back at a subsequent meeting and, and be able to provide feedback and, and, and vote on it? Are we looking to do that tonight?
It's really the will of the committee, um, that, you know, I think the, the region can vote to determine whether they want to allow, um, vote participation and, and whether you do that tonight or at a future meeting, that's really up to the committee.
What Jones read off is a very normal process to do it and it works, so...
Right, and, and it's, it's within our authority.
Yeah.
It's from the attorney general and Greg got it from our lawyer and I talked to Andy Dowd about it, so...
I think it's also important that the attorney general talks about that, it's, you know, it's when you can't physically be present, um, and there's a reason why you can't attend a meeting, um, and that physical presence at a meeting, um, is the most preferred attendance at a meeting.
My feeling is, if we do take, only my feeling, if we do take the vote, I would like to see that, and I don't know when the policy subcommittee is going to be meeting, but that the policy subcommittee look at this to see if we, if they, what their recommendation is, do we do a separate policy on remote participation, put this in, or do we just look at the procedures and how we do an open meeting? Because some of this would have to be put in, especially as we get new members all the time. And the other thing is that it also said here is that we can revoke this at any time. So once it's in, it's not a permanent thing, if we see it's not working, we want to revoke it, we can take a vote to revoke it up.
Paul?
If I could, you know, I mean, creating, trying to create a policy when it's already so distinctly spelled out in mass general law seems, I mean, you know, unless we, unless we copied the entire several pages verbatim and said, "Here's our policy," I mean, it seems, it seems a tad redundant and I would not want to see a policy subcommittee try and condense it and say, "Here's, here's really what the policy is when, you know, when we already have a, a law." And you'd hate to have the, the condensing of it omit something important that then we get handheld accountable of because we forgot something. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, if you want to take this whole thing verbatim and say, you know, "Here's policy five forty-five" or whatever we, whatever the next number is, I mean, I'm okay with that, but I don't think we'd want the policy subcommittee to do anything about rephrasing this, it's pretty clear, I think, I mean, I, so I just got this for the first time tonight, um, and, you know, I, it, it makes sense to me, I, I, you know, in, in particular, let me just kind of throw this out, in particular with one of our most senior members, um, you know, about to maybe have to relocate during the week because of some work requirements, you know, would be...
Abandonment.
It wouldn't be a bad thing to have in place, at least on a, you know, for, for one meeting, say, let's say one meeting, and then we could maybe have a month to read this, put it in place, and then we could permanently put it in place, you know, going forward if it was the will of the committee. Just saying, I mean, there's a lot of experience about to walk out the door in, otherwise, and my thinking is, if we can save that experience, we should.
I just, just have, um, just regarding, uh, Jones, um, questions about the policy. So you, I think you were referring to also an existing policy that we have regarding running a meeting.
Right.
So we probably want to look at it, that existing policy about running a meeting, and maybe add something about, or, you know, whatever is allowed by mass general law, because you don't want to put a law in a policy because, verbatim, because it can change and then you have to change the policy.
Right.
But if you reference the law in the existing how to run a meeting, school committee policy, then that, after, if, if you were to make that vote, then that would be something that would go before the, the policy subcommittee to revise that existing policy.
Yeah, Mike, because I, I agree, Paul, I mean, we don't want to go through the whole thing, I mean, this one page is just a very quick, it says rationale, requirements, reasons. The only thing I'm concerned...
There was an attachment in the packet tonight.
No, that, I just got it today. But the procedures, I think that's the most important thing, we, we all agree with the rationale and that's our authority, it's just the bottom part because it's, and I think it could, it could be, like Lynn says, it could be attached to the regular policy, all we'd have to add is that we allow remote participation, we could take, and the policy could look at it and with Greg's, uh, um, guidance, and okay, is, you could just attach that one quick sheet, take a look at it, see if it's correct, and just attach it as a reference as we've done to some of the other policies. I, it's just because of the procedure and maybe we'd have to have our attorney look at it too and say, "Okay, is that true? Is it true that every vote has to be a roll call vote?" Because that was something new to me.
It has been my experience.
It's the law, it's the way the law reads.
It is, okay.
Yeah, so it'd take a little bit longer to go around the horn every time, but it wouldn't be bad.
So you've done that?
Yes.
Okay.
Every time. Um, so I'll make a suggestion, and while the policy subcommittee may take a look at, um, how to put this in a, uh, regional school committee policy, um, I'll make a motion and see if people want to play that we vote to allow participation of, um, uh, that we vote to allow remote participation in accordance with mass general law, currently nine forty CMR twenty-nine dot ten.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, uh, all those with favor? Um, so the policy subcommittee is trying to meet next week, no, two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we have a...
Maybe if we can...
We'll let you know.
If we have a quorum, but if we do, then we can possibly bring this up in our meeting. So, good. Um, so our next, um, business is a superintendent's report to the committee.
We had a talk about the principal's report.
Before I begin, I just want to take a moment to thank central office for their support. Uh, we were very busy this summer, Marianne spoke very authorfully about it, it was exciting to have so many few big T-Hawks in the building, um, and welcoming them and seeing their just, um, excitement to learn. And, um, Mike Gorman's support with the turnaround, there is just not words, how fast his team worked to prepare the school in those few short weeks from when the summer program ended and the traditional regular school year began, phenomenal, and no matter what Algonquin needs, a quick phone call to the central office, they are always there to pick up the phone, answer our question and get us the resource, so I just really appreciate their support. Um, poor Marianne, I think I was calling at like seven, eight o'clock last night, she always takes my calls, so that's just a real testament to the teamwork that they foster, um, and that we also, I'm ready at Algonquin, so thank you for that. Before I begin, also, I just want to welcome our new assistant principal, Kathy Carmignani, to the Algonquin administrative team. She is a veteran math teacher here at Algonquin with a guidance background, she has been a wonderful addition to the team, pushing our thinking, helping us, um, take some perspective taking on some of the policies that we do, some of our protocols, and really helping us grow, um, as a whole team unit. Um, I would say it's been a very positive start and we've really enjoyed her being a part of the team, so thank you for that opportunity. Um, as always, thank, thank you to all of our school committee members for being here and for the opportunity to talk about the wonderful work by all of our faculty members and our students, so I'm going to dive into the principal's report. I'll try to not talk with my hands, but I can't find the thing. Um, I just wanted to make sure that everyone realizes that I always try to, uh, pro- provide updated pieces of art that's ongoing with the school year, so the two pieces at the top are by Sidney Vogel in our art two class, and it's just a really great way to kind of start the piece, to always try to capture the different opportunities, um, that our students have and the products that they create. So each month like last year, you will see that. Uh, academically, we are, um, in full swing for our fall musical production, the auditions went very, very well, um, we have over forty cast members in the actual play and then the, uh, musical director along with support staff are creating some wonderful opportunities and additional opportunities for students who may not have an actual part in the play and how they can be a part of the musical. So it's really exciting how they, they find a way to have people be involved in the process. Decca had a wonderful launch meeting earlier this month, um, a former educator, uh, Mr. Levine came back, he was a Latin educator, and he was in Ms. Moss's class, wonderful opportunity that she arranged, where students learn how to apply world language in college studies and beyond, so it's great to see that connection. And I remember we talked about, um, as a group last year and a team last year, the growth of our world language program, so it's wonderful for our students to then see how you can apply that beyond Algonquin's walls. AD Masarino spoke about our summer running program, we had a hundred and eight runners participate in our second annual program. This is something that Patrick and his team have just taken on, and the purpose of it was to help unite Southborough and Northborough as well as around community before we launch into the school year, so we're fostering and building those positive connections, those positive networks that help our students foster, um, and grow while in high school. Freshman orientation, um, continues to be a huge success. This is our third year that we, that I've had the opportunity to be a part of it. Ms. Brown and Ms. Turner are stellar at what they do with freshman orientation. Each, each year we have taken the time to collect data, what is the best day, what is the best time, what do our students need who are entering Algonquin, what do our mentors do, um, some of the most recent data, and we've had over a hundred percent response rate, positive of perfect time, perfect day, everything that included was a big win for us, um, so that's really exciting. And our mentors are phenomenal in that they continue that mentorship work into the school year, from lockers to lunch, those scary parts of high school, they really make it small and manageable for, um, our students that are coming in. Um, in addition to that, we had our school psychologist, Dr. Lipton, do a presentation for our parents, um, about teenagers, mental health and supports, kind of answering some about teenagers, mental health, and supports, kind of answering some of those ins and outs that transitionally happened between eighth, ninth grade, ninth grade year, one of the bigger transitional years. And I did a little Q and A session on just the ins and outs of Algonquin, how prepare our freshman families joining us. Our color guard spent the summer learning some new routines, and they will take the field on Saturday for the football game. So, excited to see those routines, and hopefully you guys can make it. On the next page, our Best Buddies launched earlier this month. They're opening kickoff ceremonies. They had a huge following. And as all of you know, Best Buddies offers a myriad of supports for students to make positive connections, network, and just make sure that they are all finding their own niche here at Algonquin. Our activity Extravaganza, it's a little rained out, but that's okay. We had pre-planned a rain date on that Friday. Huge success. Thank you to Ms. Moulton for organizing it, and all of our advisors and all of our student leaders setting up the various tables. Mike's team came out, kinds of tables, considered everything that they needed. Checking with the B-Club, said these are good, which is great. They do such a wonderful job. In addition to that, something new for this year is we're having a semi-formal homecoming. So, not everything is bad with IEEE. Because we moved the football game, we're actually going to host a more formal dance. We'll probably get more students that are able to attend because we're not competing with the football game. So, that's exciting. And thank you to Ms. Burns and Mr. Staines for hosting that and putting that on. A.D. Masarino did a phenomenal update of athletics. A lot of the information is written here if you wanted to go back and read it. So, as always, thank you so much for the in-depth work that he does. I'm skipping on to department updates. Social Studies did a phenomenal realignment of their current resources and are offering different courses that replace others, Positive Psychology and Race in America. Those had huge success rates for students signing up for them. So, that, we definitely picked electives that were interesting for our students and applicable in some of the college work, some of the trends that are going on in our global economy. Big Group, again, continues their work on developing the whole student, understand those conversational skills, understand those study skills, how to transition from the eighth and ninth grade to be successful, while also delivering the content effectively. And they ran their open house classroom as Big Group, so parents were able to experience that when they came. So, when students go back and talk about Big Group, they got to see the costumes, and they got to see them in action. Applied Arts had their open house for tiny tomahawks. There's a slight delay on when we open tiny tomahawks. That's intentional. So, our high school students can develop lesson plans and then practice those lesson plans with our tiny tomahawk students. So, it's great to have them do that real-life application, and it is so fun. I know all of the administrators took the time out of their day to go visit the morning and afternoon sessions and really welcome our new future T-Hawks into the building. For science, Laurie Zanini spoke to how the physics and environmental science teachers are looking to improve their content and instructional strategies by integrating new content topics, like climate change, for our juniors physics program. So, it's really great when you can see some of those global trends really being integrated into the curriculum to make them real life and support the application beyond Algonquin. As always, Guidance does a phenomenal job in helping with connections, a positive opening to the building, student schedules, and helping students get to informal classes. They're already running workshops. They are so efficient in their work. They're already in the classrooms, helping our students in college and social emotional wellness. So, thank you Lisa Conroy and her team. And on the last page, the library, I'm just, I'm going to throw it out there. I'm in Tuesday trivia. I think I've been in for a long time. Usually, I get them all wrong, and it's kind of whatever comes out of Kim Honey's mind. I got one right. I knew when Algonquin opened, which I probably should have as the principal. So, I got that one right, and I think I beat most of the students. I got everything else wrong from where the first McDonald's was and on. But if you ever have a Tuesday morning where you're free, it's at seven o'clock. It's great to see the students kind of collaborate, come together as teams, and do it. It's a different topic each week. PE, before I forget, I just wanted to commend Mike's work on some of this grant work. Mike, Brian, and I were brainstorming with some additional grant work on how to get some creative spaces for PE and health. And it's, it's that really meticulous, logical thinking that Mike Gorman offers to the situation that helps us be really innovative and creative with some of our resources. And Brian Mossen was there as we discussed it. So, really appreciative of Mike Gorman's work. Something that Brian spoke to, Mr. Moss, in the department over PE, is the opportunity that they create for students to develop networking connections and setting up activities where you're actually set up to fail, so that you can learn that, that risk of failure and attempting something new in a safe learning environment. And they also switch up the different groups, so each people can be different leaders. And so, that helps students feel comfortable to take risks when they're learning something new, like archery, or I think it was pickleball. I never played pickleball, but something like that. So, thank you for bringing for that. In math, Ms. Tempting did a post-it note activity where students presented their learning styles so that she could better differentiate her lessons and meet their, their needs and get to know them better. And Ms. Barry, one of our new math teachers, worked with her students in setting goals and expectations for their math and their math development. English department kind of flips the switch, and normally, they do their summer reading, writing contest, and essay, but now it's for faculty and staff in this situation. And there's some really exciting prizes for that, by the way. Hence, they want you to go in and get them and to read that, some how to value prizes. But it's really great for us to model for the students, the process of writing and all the hard work that goes into it. And lastly, we just continue to promote the, the time to get involved. We're always saying to our parents and our students, pick an activity, pick a sport, get involved in Algonquin. Same thing for our parents. Be a part of our APTO, volunteer for some of the events that we have going on. We're always looking for help and support. And push yourself to get, to know something new about someone that you didn't know. So, thank you.
A question about the science program and the climate change awareness and content, which is marvelous. Is there a, a force of children that are looking to go to the climate change on this Friday, to the March in Boston or Worcester?
I'm actually, I don't know. I can check in with Miss Zanini about that. I do know we have some club activities that might align with it, but I can share that with her and have her reach out to her.
Yeah, how is an absence like that looked at?
So, with a parent note, it'd be excused.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That's great. Chuck, go.
Thank you. The next in your packet is the September 2019 enrollment numbers. We welcomed 1,402 students on August 28th. Our projection was 1,411. MezDEF is projecting 1,399, so we're fairly close. I will point out that the North Row, South Row percentage of 62.92%, or North Row 37.8%. We haven't seen those types of percentages for almost over a decade. It's been since 2006. So, it's something to keep an eye on as we, as we consider the budgets and working closely with the town administrators as that number changes over time. Next in your packet is a statement of revenue for the FY 20 expenditure report. Becky, I don't know if you want to...
So, yes, we worked closely with District Treasurer Chris Tagg to close out the fiscal year 2019 budget. As you can see, with the, the regular education and the special education budgets, we do have a, a bit of a surplus. And so, we are working with her to finalize exactly the amount that will be put into our E and D for this upcoming year. Where, as you know, the maximum can be 5%. We will be under that number. We're looking at probably about a range of 3.9 to 4.2% that would be put into our E and D. In terms of the athletic budget, one thing that I did want to point out to you is for the budget number, that was a, a prediction of what the receipts would be for athletics for last year. We did come in at less than that, but Mike does a wonderful job at operating the athletic program, and we were within budget range of what was received for athletics. So, this year, that's the way it looks, and that has historically been the way that we've reported this information. But we will be going forward with reporting what the actual receipts will be, so that you can get a true picture of what that athletic budget looks like.
If I could ask a question on the investment income? I mean, we've, we haven't hit our numbers on investment income in a lot of years. I mean, this year, we've got, you know, we've, we've kind of blown by it, actually. That's terrific. Is that, that, are we, are we investing differently now? Or what generated a $6,600 check for us, like in the month of June? It was an investment. I mean, that's typically bank account interest and stuff, right? Is it?
We haven't analyzed that, but we will, to figure out exactly where to put our own money.
Yeah, yeah. So, I move that we vote to approve the statement of revenue until audited.
Second.
All those in favor?
So, next is the capital plan update. So, in your packet is the FY 19, FY 24 capital plan. Dr. Walsh, Mike Gorman, and I will be sitting down and actually updating this and to bring it back to the budget subcommittee for review. But just as a point of conversation and reference moving forward for the work that lies ahead.
Kathy?
I just have a question. On capital projects, how are we doing? How is the condition of the track?
At the point, point, it's safe. Continue on to make the repair. It is at the end of its life, but we know that. We continue on to make it functional until we can see some time to go and upgrade it.
So, the last time we did, we were just patching. Is that correct?
Correct. We find imperfections to it, whether DMG or items in the, you know, the trip houses. What we do is, in spring and fall, we go through and repair everything we can to make it as safe as possible and then basically get it functional. Key words on safety, so the trip houses, so that it doesn't need to be changed.
Okay. Thank you for the good job on that.
So, next in your packet is the FY 20, let be general fund expenditure report. And Becky, you want to pick it up, please?
At this point in time, we have encumbered as much as we possibly can. I mean, for salaries going forward and any known expenditures, it has all been encumbered for the year. So, at this point, we have 12.57% remaining on the budget, and that number is very much in line with where we were last year. We, there are some areas that we will be keeping a close eye. One of them is facilities. But right now, we are in line with what our historical trends have been.
So, I would move that we vote to approve until audited both the 2019 expenditure report, which I think we skipped over in the agenda, and the 2020 expenditure report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can we have the FY 20 statement of revenue? Becky, do you want to?
So, this is the, as of August 31st, this is what our revenue has been. It is a beginning. So, we start out on July 1 with zero balance, basically. So, you will see, particularly down at the bottom where it has our OPEB, this would be what was received so far for this fiscal year. There were other funds that had been received in, prior to July 1 that were reported on the previous report that you had, you had already looked at. All of our assessments are coming in. We did receive chapter, our chapter 70 funds. We are awaiting transportation funds still from the state, but we are tracking everything. And if you have any questions about any of it, please feel free to ask.
Since we met last spring, didn't the governor's budget come in higher too? So, there might be some pluses.
Yes.
Okay.
We did see an increase in both chapter 70 and transportation.
Transportation reimbursement was at 77%, which was an increase from what we had budgeted. And book cracker was also a slight increase over what we had. I also would like to point out, in terms of the sale of stock that we had, in 2001, we had held an insurance, we had prudential insurance. And through the process of prudential insurance, demutualizing and moving to prudential financial life insurance that we held was actually changed to a stock option. So, we received stocks in 2001, which was employee benefit. And we've held that stock for a number of years. And this past summer, through the work of Superintendent Johnson in June, Christine Tagg and working collaboratively with the town administrators, we were successfully able to sell that, that stock. The stock belonged to the town, some of, some of it belonged to the town of South Row, the town of North Row, and the region. And so, that was a portion appropriately. And as a result, we have approximately $138,000 in our OPEB account. The original intention of the stock was an employee benefit. So, it makes most sense that that stock be placed in other post-employee benefits. And it's a great opportunity for us to actually have enough money to, to launch that. Christine Tagg, District Treasurer, is looking into different options and trust options, and we'll have a report in the near future about starting an OPEB trust fund.
So, I think it's, it's vital that we do that. So, just as a point of note, the town of South Row was at zero until we started an OPEB account. We started to fund it every year with, I believe, $250,000. And now, it's up over 1.3 million. So, it's actually getting, you know, going to, at some point, it will be a substantial number. It's, it's getting there, but we have a long way to go. But you have to start somewhere, and I'm glad we did, and it's great to see if, you know, the, the region will do that as well.
We were talking about it for a while, in my meetings.
So, just, just from a, a bookkeeping point of view, I guess, I mean, so where, is that money, that the third that we got?
Yeah.
Is that what's showing up in the revenue as of June 30th? That 50 grand or so that we have for OPEB on the bottom? Or is it showing up on the August 31st revenue? Or is it not shown yet?
Yeah, it's portions of it. Actually, and we can show you the, the fund balance and the accounting that we have, but it's not, it's not necessar, it's what's hitting the revolving account of that time. So, the distribution of, we were holding the stock. So, the distribution to the town of South Row and North Row, and the difference was that $22,000 because we were holding stock prior to that, that we had sold.
We had received dividends already. So, because the dividends, we were holding on to that once we, if you will, settled up with the other two members, that was, this is the difference between what we had already received in dividends, the sale of the stock, and then dispersing it between the three entities.
Okay, so, I mean, just, just, I'm sorry. I mean, our share of the stock sale, I thought, was like 50 or 60 grand, or is it, is it not? So, so 50 or 60 grand should be showing up somewhere.
And because this is just for FY 20, the number that you're looking at here, the 22,000, is just for FY 20. That was our portion of it just for this fiscal year, but we had already received some of it in FY 19 as well. So, it does equal the 66 that we had...
So, the sale of the stock was a multi-transaction event?
So, the, so we were, no, that's okay. We were collecting dividends since 2001.
Oh, I got, I know that, yeah.
So, the sale of the stock happened on July 10.
Okay.
And that's, the sale of that stock, what at the time was $178,333. And we had...
And we got, what, 30 or 40% of it, right?
So, we, the region received $66,490.
Okay.
And then, with the dividend money that we had been collecting over time, the, the 22,000 is what hit our, our revenue stream in terms of the statement of revenue. But the overall amount that we received was $60,400. So, it's, it's, and we can print out the accounting, the fund balance and the accounting, how it went.
Right.
And we did, we had the same questions, actually, with our, with our town account, with our accountant, around how is this being accounted for? And we can get a...
So, it's just, is it, is it sitting in a bank now or something? And so, waiting to apply it, or?
No, it's sitting in an account. Yeah, it's sitting in a, a account, in a revolving account, waiting for us to actually apply it to an OPEB account.
Okay.
And that balance is $138,084.93.
Are we not seeing it on our reports because it's on a balance sheet account?
Yes.
And we don't see balance sheets.
Exactly.
Okay, so it's not... Okay, so, it's not considered revenue?
Right.
Sorry.
So, we have to vote this?
I forget what we're talking about. We'll move until audited. Second.
All those in favor?
So, in your packet, our FY twenty-one budget priorities, basically, budget priorities will start with FY twenty. So, just for your reference, so at the October meeting, we'll be talking about what are our budget priorities for FY twenty-one. Also in your packet is the FY twenty-one budget calendar with dates that we know of at this time. And obviously, as this is a dynamic document, and we'll be adding dates as we move forward in the process. So, also in your packet is our, is the 2019, 2020 Subcommittee Liaison Assignment Document. So, if you have not had a chance yet to let Kathy know what assignments you're interested in.
Yeah, I feel like I'm missing some. I think, I feel like some people tell me stuff and I'm missing this. So, go ahead.
I am assigned to a world language study group, but not, that was a surprise for me. And so, I am serving on the other two with the arts group, and I think that that will be a nice full year.
Okay. So, I can take you off of that?
I think so.
Okay. And then, Sean, you had asked for something too. And I thought I put it in, but now it's not on here.
Yeah, a couple. Technology working group.
And you can look at it later and like, just let me know what you're, email me whatever else you guys want. There is no policy or distribution. Our next order business is audience sharing. Personnel.
So, in your packet is the personnel report. The new staff members who joined us in 2019, 2020, new residences, transfers, and designations.
And then, communications.
So, you have the back-to-school newsletter that went out on August 15th. Also, just a comment on the district reads. So, this year, we're having ten schools, three districts, one community of readers. So, the book, the district read is The Gift of Failure by Jessica Leahy. So, we're encouraging community members to pick up the book and read. We'll be having two sessions, one in the fall and then one in the spring. In the spring on March 25th, Jessica Leahy, the author of the book, will actually be presenting her work. Next in your packet is a letter of thanks. So, this summer, we received a phone call from Synopsys asking if we wanted any furniture, used furniture. And we said absolutely. So, we were fortunate enough to have, receive office furniture, including office table, chairs, cubicles, which has made a significant difference at central office. So, we're very appreciative of that donation. Also is a distribution of the department presentations for this year. And ANSPAC calendar of events, school committee dates. And then, the MASC, Mass Joint Conference, which I know many of you have attended in the past. It's a great event, a great opportunity to network with other school districts and school committee members, and also for us to engage in professional learning. So, if you're interested and if you're available, let Cheryl up your mail and show registry you for that event. And lastly, I will not tell you how it ends this year, but you have the Selected Mass General Laws 2019. If you do not want yours, Kathy, take it back and make good use of it.
So, I think that there's payroll assigned before we leave, so everyone can just huddle back out and sign that. And then, just, and then we have agendas for next month.
Might I suggest that we relook at the concussion topic, whether it should be mandatory and how the numbers are going for enrollment, please?
I don't know if this is convenient. Combined, but we didn't really, we were talking so much, it's going to be uncombined. But, just like an update on the solar, like to understand on that. You know, because we can do it next month, and we don't have to wait till December.
I'd love to hear more about the new branding of the BYOD to digital integration and what the plans are and how that rebranding has gone.
Good. How do I do that?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination of the discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open meeting.
Should we roll call or not? Roll call. All right, roll call. Oh, wait a second, sorry. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes.